Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, August 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. You'll notice here in the room, and if you're watching the stream, that we have returned to some of our protocols due to the COVID pandemic. We've spaced ourselves out again up here and displaced our attorney to his separate table and a requiring mask in the room. And so we appreciate that. It's a little unfortunate that we're in this situation, but the new variants are concerning, and there are a lot of cases in Dare County, and so we're being cautious. So I'd like to recognize, we have some special events today, and I'd like to recognize we have our former fire chiefs in the room with us today, and we appreciate you being here this morning, sir. So if you will please join me in a brief moment of silence. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda are recognitions, and the first will be a presentation and an update on Dowdy Park events from Paige Griffin.
Good morning, Mayor. I've been told I may take this off.
Yes.
I'm standing at the podium. Good morning, Mayor and council members. It is National Farmers Market Week this week, and we are halfway through our Dowdy Park markets, so thank you for letting me come and share this morning. It's been an incredible year for our vendors, for sales, and for guest attendance. In July, actually in June, we were probably in the numbers of 475. In June, we were closer to 550, which is up, obviously, from last year, but we're tracking with the numbers that we had in 2019, so we've been very pleased with that. One of the exciting components for this year has been our Young Entrepreneur Program. We have worked with high schoolers and middle schoolers who have, I would say, extraordinary talents, and they have come through a series of classes, or very similar to a small business program, if you will, and they've been very successful in selling their wares at the market, even to the point of having to miss a market because they sold out, or possibly leave early. So it's been a great learning experience. We've worked with three of those young entrepreneurs and hope to expand the program next year. We continue to work with our community partners, DCHH, breaking through some of the volunteer organizations like NC Works, and then most recently, we've added Nest this year. Looking towards the future, we started yoga yesterday. We actually had people show up and did it underneath the pavilion in the rain. So yoga's going to be on Tuesdays at 7:30, and a big shout out to Village Realty, because they are sponsoring that for us again this year, so we appreciate that. We will probably not do music tonight, just because of the rain, but we'll start next week, and that will run all the way through September 9th. That time slot will be 6:00 to 7:30, and we have tried very hard to use local bands for that and been successful with that, so grateful for the funds to be able to do that and put back into our community. Friday nights in September and October, we are looking at adding movies, kind of back-to-school type things, and then our holiday markets will start in November and December. Last year, we did four markets. I think that's what we're going to do again this year. I think the highlight is the night market, and that coincides with Public Works and with the town light display at Dowdy Park. And we had like 725 people last year. It was amazing, but it was a lot of fun, and it was a great kickoff for the holiday season, so we're appreciative of that. You know, constantly, I'm approached with suggestions, or advice, or things we ought to do, which I'm sure you are as well, but I think the resounding theme, there are actually probably three that I hear, and that would be, they're thankful for this intentional community that we have created with the market. They are very grateful for the opportunity to be able to have accessible to them, to be able to shop local, and have that accessible to those as guests and also as vendors. And then third, I would say would be that ability to communicate and connect with people that they don't necessarily always see, because if you live in Manio or Southern Shores, in the summer, you don't necessarily travel to those places. But at Dowdy Park Farmers Market, we constantly see people, even as far as Plymouth, Columbia, Elissa City, come to our market. And so that sense of the community that we have created, I thank you. I thank you for that, and I appreciate it, and that's really all I've got.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Paige, I'll ask the board if they have questions, but you know, one of the things that inspired the holiday markets last year was the fact that so many of those markets were inside in crowded conditions, and they were not going to be able to be held at all if they didn't have a venue, a safe outdoor venue, and so that's pretty exciting that we were able to do that, and that we're able to do that again. I think the extent to which we can provide this amenity outdoors at this time, I think, is pretty helpful to the community. So, Webb, any questions?
Nothing but kudos. I mean, obviously, I walk through there just about every Thursday and stuff, and see people and really enjoy it, Farmers Market, but as you've mentioned, I think one of the other things is that you're doing so much more than just the Farmers Market. There are other things with the movie night, the young entrepreneurs, and I just appreciate your dedication and work, and what you're doing for the town and Nags Head and the community at large. Thank you.
Just thank you for your work. I've attended most of the markets, had an opportunity to talk to you, talked to a lot of the vendors, and they're very happy with the setup that we've got there. And like Webb said, it's much more than just a Farmers Market, really is, and to you and the public, I'm sorry, the planning department staff that's out there every week, thank you for the job you do.
Great. Thank you.
No, Paige, thank you for all the hard work and creativity that you've brought to the park, both in the Farmers Market and the other events, and for the young entrepreneurs, that's even very much appreciated. But I guess the best sign that you've succeeded is imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. Others are doing it.
You are.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Thanks, Paige, for your work. There's not much more I can say, but I will say that I was going to touch on what Renee just said, and I was approached by a commissioner in KDH that said, "Your model has created it and made it easier for other towns to just duplicate," so thank you again for your work and looking forward to making it better.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Paige. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Outer Banks Sporting Events regarding the half marathon, and we should have Debbie Luke and Matt Whittier.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And commissioners. I'm with Outer Banks Sporting Event, and this is Matt Whittier, our race director. And this year, we're hosting the 2021 OBX Town Bank Half Marathon. It will not be a full marathon, and fun run on the weekend of November the 5th through the 7th. This is the 16th annual event. Obviously, we've had to make quite a few adjustments, and it's not exactly the way the annual event should run, but due to COVID and everything that happened in 2020, we're just trying to get back up and running and get folks out and running and enjoying what they do. Our event this year, we will begin at the lovely Soundside Event Park. It's just a beautiful place in Nags Head, really in Dare County. We plan to have activities more geared this year for families that come out there, as well as our runners. Our goal is to open the gates up about 5 o'clock at the Soundside Park and have our volunteers posted at all the gates for our runners to come in. We have volunteers to direct our parking, clean the site, man the various events, and help with crowd control. Our volunteers will take the crowd control class to get certified. We have met with the Nags Head staff, the police, to have talked about police presence at our event and on the road. We've met with DOT, we've talked about crowd control. We've also met with the visitor bureau on the Soundside Event Site, the hospital, and we're now working with EMS and the emergency management as well. We realize that this does impact several neighborhoods. We've been out and talked with quite a few of the neighborhoods and the people along the route. They seem very excited about the event starting back up and happening in Nags Head and especially happening at the Soundside Events Park. We're just really happy about this. We hope this is a great event and something that will showcase Nags Head.
Great.
If you have any questions about the actual route, Matt can talk to you about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll start at the other end this time. Mr. Sears?
Do you think this route's more difficult than the last half marathon?
No, and we're actually impacting less of Nags Head with this particular route than we have in the past. It's a shorter route. It starts at Soundside and it actually ends back at Soundside. So we'll start at Soundside going north on the bypass. We'll actually go backwards through the golf course where we've gone the other route before. We'll go down the bypass to Blue Jay, cut up through there, and go through the park, through Nags Head Woods Road, old Nags Head Woods Road, come out there on Villa Dunes, go back to the bypass, down the bypass to Jockeys Ridge. They're very excited about us coming through there. They're just going to showcase their area. Come out, go back south on the bypass, headed toward Soundside Drive, down Soundside Drive, on the Soundside there, come out by the post office, and then from there, south back to the event site.
Thank you.
Renee?
Is DOT working with you on the cones issue?
So DOT, with their limited staff, is not going to be able to do work with us on the cones. However, they gave us two contracted companies that they suggest that we talk to about putting the cones out.
I'd heard they were short-staffed and was wondering if they'd be able to accommodate.
Yes.
And do you also see, in previous half marathons, we've shut down both lanes for the start, obviously because we were going across the road when heading south? Do you see the need in closing down both southbound lanes to get started?
No, we're going to close down the west side of the...
Southbound lanes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
From a policy standpoint, I think it's great. Having everything in Nags Head speaks volumes. I think we've got a pretty root. I like it. Good luck working the logistics out with staff. That's where all the issues would be and where hopefully the town is working closely with you and all the other agencies. It's not difficult, I mean, it's not easy to get all those worked out, but good luck.
They've been great, so thank you. Staff's been wonderful.
Great. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a retirement.
See what I'm working with. Good morning, Mayor, distinguished commissioners. On June 9th, 1987, when John Kenny was hired with the Town of Nags Head Water Department, people were complaining that gas was 86 cents a gallon. I say that just to give a little perspective on how long John has served Nags Head. As any fire chief will tell you, before you recognize the firefighter, you must recognize the members of their family that love and support them and make their service possible. John's amazing 33-year career has been supported by his wife, Kim, of 39 years, his children, Sean, Ian, Kelly, and Zach. I'm also told that there's a grandchild on the way that will one day vie for his attention. While working in the water department, John Pop Pop Kenny served as a Nags Head volunteer firefighter. According to John, he fought his first big fire on December 17th, 1989. He said it was terrifying and exciting all at the same time. After that fire, John was hooked. He transferred out of the water department and into the fire department on March 6th, 1989. John ascended through the ranks and was promoted to fire captain on March 6th, 1996, where he made a lasting impact on today's Nags Head firefighters. But for John, being a good firefighter was not enough. He was driven to become a great lifeguard as well, and is still competing and occasionally winning lifeguard competitions today. During John's time with the town, he fought fires, he performed rescues, he provided emergency medical care, and led community risk reduction efforts. John worked with almost every member of Nags Head Fire Rescue and hundreds of ocean rescue lifeguards. His guidance, support, and mentoring led many of them to pursue careers in public safety, including two of his children. John told me that the highlight of his career came when he received the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. John was honored to receive an award named after his friend of many years. During John's time with the Nags Head Fire Department, he has witnessed many changes within the fire department and ocean rescue. John accepted and adapted to these environments, but never once forgot to honor the past and history of our fire department. Captain Kenny, your service and contributions to Nags Head Fire and Ocean Rescue has made it a better place. Thank you for your 33 years of courage, commitment, and compassion.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Appreciate all your years.
Thank you.
Always enjoyed working with you. Thank you. Thanks for working with me.
John, we want a picture with you, and we have a small gift for you, but you've earned the opportunity to speak at the podium if you'd like to say...
I've been thinking about this for a few minutes, well, quite a few minutes. I'm the last firefighter that served every fire station in the town. I started in Jockey Ridge Station and actually threw trash cans four times when sanitation employees couldn't get in because of storms. Ralph Thurman and I actually, well, they were driving the trucks. We were throwing the cans before the automated trash removal. I thought that was pretty, not too many people can say they've done that. But I love the town. I've just recently moved back, and the town has grown from 25% I think when I moved here, and I'd have to ask the planning to figure out how much it's felt now. But the fire department has seen many changes for the better, and it's, we're going places that are really a good place. And I thank all of you and the town itself for employing me and putting up with me for 33 and a half years. I've had some good times. I've met with Webb a couple times. But I thank Chief Osborne and Chief Wells and Deputy Chief Height, especially Deputy Chief Height with the putting up with me sometime, and all the people who've worked with me. I see lifeguards that I've worked with in the past that are doctors, pilots. It's really fulfilling to see them progress and to better themselves, and I've seen the great change in the kids, as I call them, because I'm so old, and I did win six gold medals at regionals, just to get that straight. But I just want to thank you all, and I love the town. I love everybody, and I think everybody, we all need to get together, and love is the word for the whole country, the world, right now, and I think that's really important. And I'd like to get rid of these sometime soon, but thank you all, and it's been a great ride, and thank you.
Thank you, John. I do want to give board members a chance, if they want to say anything. Webb, you want to say anything about those meetings?
I don't think I'm allowed to say anything about some of those meetings, but I've always considered John and his family friends, and I see some sitting out there that are fortunate enough that neighbors, as well as working together, and you know, just seeing your kids grow and everything is, I think that's the best tribute I can give to you outside of work. At in-work, you were always there. You always did everything that was needed. You were outspoken, which I actually appreciate, and sometimes that may cause some differences of opinion, but that's good. That's how we progress, and I can't honor you any more than just saying thank you so much for what you've done for the town.
Thank you, Kevin.
It was a pleasure working with you. Sitting here, I recall an incident many years ago during a heavy snowstorm. There was a house fire in Axie Cove. We get back there, and I helped grab the initial hose to get it up, just until the wind blew out of the house, and I said, "That's it. I'm done." I went back the other way. But working with you through the storms and the meals that you prepared for public safety, that was always, you know, certainly nice, and we appreciate the efforts that you made on behalf of the County of Nags Head, so thank you.
Indeed, John, and I look forward to you enjoying your retirement in Nags Head now that you're back, seeing you on the beach with your dogs in the mornings. That's great, and appreciate you being the old man around the lifeguards. You're welcome to hang around, I think. Renee?
John, you're the model of what every public servant should be. Your contributions go way beyond what the public knows about. You've contributed in so many ways, big and small, to the town of Nags Head, and I don't think anybody can thank you enough for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
John, I'd have to agree with her. You and I haven't ever had a long, serious conversation, or even a conversation of any importance, but I do have a frequency at this gym over here, and your name's always number one in every category, and the mayor calls you the old man amongst the kids. I think you probably still run circles around the kids. So your reputation far exceeds just where you are, and I've heard nothing but good things, so I appreciate what you've done for Nags Head to make it where it is today.
Thank you.
Sir, I'll invite the board up to...
Mask, no mask.
And John, we have a plaque for you presented to John Kenny upon retirement with grateful appreciation for your dedicated and loyal service to Town of Nags Head, 1987 to 2000. Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it, sir. Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and I will turn this over to our attorney today. Robert?
Good morning. Appreciate you standing in for John this morning.
This time, we'll open public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, if you could please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment? All right, seeing none.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment.
We got an email.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it? Yes, Carolyn. So we did receive an email with regard to public comment, did we not?
Came in this morning. I just received it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Came in...
Wasn't aware of that.
Few minutes ago, 9:20. I see it.
In that case, I think what I will do, we do have, we do have one letter, and it's not a long letter, so I will read this into public comment, if that's appropriate. This is from Mr. Dave Masters regarding...
Junior.
Okay, thank you. Dave Masters, Jr., regarding the fishing tournament and beach permits. Sorry, I wanted to get this email to you before the meeting today, but my email from yesterday got kicked back for the wrong address. The Nags Head Surf Fishing Club would like to thank the board for consideration of the resolution for our beach driving permits. We understand the new provision limiting each team to three vehicles. We will communicate that to the teams if approved and enforce it stringently, as we do with all beach driving regulations. Our head judge, Bobby Halsted, asks Officer Jimmy Pierce to attend our captains' meeting every year and talk about the safety and conduct on the beach and in our town. Bobby and the 40-plus judges provide our ears and eyes on the beach during the tournament. Bobby has always been very conscientious when laying out the fishing stations to avoid large gathering areas such as hotels and public access points. As the town continues to study the beach driving regulations, I would be interested in attending any meetings or joining a committee. Many people, residents and visitors, enjoy the privilege of driving on the beach during the off-season. Hopefully, this will be able to continue with enhanced regulations. Thank you, Dave Masters, Jr., president of the Nags Head Surf Fishing Club and a town So that will be, that's the extent of public comment this morning. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion on that would be in order.
Is that moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The next items are public hearings, beginning with a special use permit, change of use application from Outer Banks Community Church. Mr. Hobbs?
Thank you, Mayor. We will go ahead and open the public hearing to consider special use permit, change of use application submitted by Outer Banks Community Church to operate a religious complex within the Croden Center Shopping Center, Unit 12, at 4711 South Croden Highway, Nags When considering an application for a special use permit, the Board of Commissioners sits as a quasi-judicial body. Therefore, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. Questions from the board will not be permitted, I mean, questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from any of the sworn witnesses once recognized as... the hearing, please remember that you must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts presented during this hearing, and disregard the particulars discussed with the applicant or another party. A member must base his or her decision on the evidence presented during this hearing. Any member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of the application that is, that is not changeable must, before the hearing, must not participate in the decision on the application. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during the hearing. While you may be presented during, before, during the hearing with copies of uns sworn statements, such as letters, emails, and the like, such uns sworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence presented during the hearing. Unsworn evidence, such as letters and emails, can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. So at this time, I would invite, if there are any board members who need to disclose a, any ex parte communications they've had about this matter before the hearing, or to ask to be excused for one of the reasons that I just went over, now would be the time to do that.
Mr. Hobbs, I have the contract for that property that they're referencing. I'd like to, have to ask the board if I can be excused from this conversation.
Second.
A motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Now, at this time, uh, I will, um, ask the town clerk to, um, swear in the applicant and all witnesses, including staff, who plan to presi, prevent, or provide testimony or evidence during this case. So if you might have an interest in speaking, please stand now and be sworn.
Mr. Wright, can you let me have a five? Please, uh, do you swear or bond testimony about the use of the whole group of witnesses?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'll go ahead and pull up, um, the floor plan for what we're going to review today. Okay. Um, as mentioned, this is a special use, change of use request being submitted, um, by the Outer Banks Community Church. They would like to go into the currently vacant unit at Croatan Shopping Center. Um, it's Building C, Unit 12, and, uh, this unit was formerly Radio Shack. And what they would like to put in there is a forty-six seat religious complex. Um, the address of this property is 4711 South Croatan Highway, and it is zoned C2 general commercial. Um, the, uh, this property is located within the neighborhood commercial land use classification, and upon review, we do believe that the proposal is consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation. Um, as you may remember, uh, back in early April, this board heard a text amendment to list religious complex as a permissible use within the commercial mixed-use development as a special use permit, um, and that was adopted, so that is why you're seeing this today. Um, as far as this request goes, there is no additional lot coverage being proposed. All the work would be, um, interior. Uh, there's no height or architectural design standards to go over or review. Again, everything is just interior to the unit. Um, the parking standard for a religious complex is one space per four, um, one parking space per four seats. So with a forty-six-seat sanctuary, they're going to be required to have twelve parking spaces on-site. And, um, when looking at the parking that was allocated to Radio Shack, and in context with the other uses and a, a overall reduction in the parking required for a shopping center, um, there is adequate parking for this particular use. Um, there's nothing about this request that would necessitate additional buffering, um, but a couple of years back, when we did do our, um, buffering review, this site was compliant, and it remains compliant. There's no additional lighting being proposed with this request, and at this point, no additional signage has been proposed. Um, when they, if approved, and they, uh, do get ready to put signage up, that will need to be reviewed and approved by town staff. Uh, we do have approval from the Dare County Health Department. They've provided their, um, approval noting that the existing septic tank on-site is adequate for the proposed use. Uh, there would be no change in stormwater management or traffic circulation. Uh, Public Works has reviewed the request, um, and has no concerns there, and, um, additionally, the Fire Department has reviewed it, but as always, um, it does need to be compliant with the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. Um, with all that said, Staff does find that the use is compliant, um, with the town code and consistent with the land use plan classification, and would recommend approval of the special use permit, change of use, as it's been presented. Uh, the Planning Board heard this at their June fifteenth meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the special use as presented. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we do have some, um, people in the audience who represent the Outer Banks Community Church.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Fuller?
Nothing.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Sorry.
Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I don't, it's, this seems pretty clean. Um, would anyone from the church like to speak?
Uh, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask the board again. Any questions for the church?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see none. Thank you. Robert?
At this time, this will be the, um, final opportunity for any presentations by sworn witnesses or questions from the board, and it doesn't appear that there are any more, unless I see any point. All right, so, um, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and I would like to, um, turn it over to the board for consideration. I'll remind you that on page three of the staff report, there are five findings that is required to be, uh, as part of your motion, um, as per section three point eight point four point six of the UDO. So you have to have, you have to find these five findings in order to, uh, approve the special, uh, use permit application. Any questions?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request as presented with the following finds and following facts as stated in staff report.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you all, and, uh, welcome.
Welcome to Agshead.
Thank you. Happy to be moving in.
Very good. Um, then the next item on our agenda would be another public hearing to consider the beach and coastal waterfront grant for the Epstein ex, access.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll, um, open the public hearing to consider the, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two public beach and coastal waterfront grant, um, pre-application for Epstein Street Beach Access. So, um, we'll open the public hearing, and first live presentation, I guess, from Ted.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Commissioners. Um, the town was invited to submit a final, uh, grant application for the Epstein Street Public Beach Access in the amount of $200,000. Um, fourteen other local governments are being invited back for a final grant application. This, uh, is over $2.8 million in requests, but approximately one, one million dollars is on the table. Um, the town's proposal includes replacement of the bathhouse and the dune walkover, as well as complete, uh, replacement of the amenities on-site, including addition of recycling containers, upgrade of the on-site wastewater system, uh, new wheel stops and replacement signage for the site. As a prerequisite for submitting this final application, we're required to hold a public hearing, um, to gain public feedback on the site plan in front of you today. Um, we have to submit our final application again by August the sixteenth, in order to be considered. Uh, David Ryan and Andy Gorman are here to answer any questions specific to site plan or budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions on the grant.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't believe we have anybody in the audience from the public to speak, so I, I'll ask, um, you and the clerk, have we heard from any of the public regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I'll ask, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Sears?
No, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Cahoon? Commissioner Brinkley? Okay. No questions. Thank you.
At this time, if there are any members of the public who'd like to come forward and address the application, if you'll please do so at this time, and state your name and address.
Good.
Seeing none, uh, Mr. Mayor, we will, uh, close the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Um, and I'll ask, uh, the board if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Motion that we approve as presented?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you all, and, uh, welcome.
Welcome to Agshead.
Thank you. Happy to be moving in.
Very good. Um, then the next item on our agenda would be another public hearing to consider the beach and coastal waterfront grant for the Epstein ex, access.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll, um, open the public hearing to consider the, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two public beach and coastal waterfront grant, um, pre-application for Epstein Street Beach Access. So, um, we'll open the public hearing, and first live presentation, I guess, from Ted.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The town was invited to submit a final, uh, grant application for the Epstein Street Public Beach Access in the amount of $200,000. Um, fourteen other local governments are being invited back for a final grant application. This, uh, is over $2.8 million in requests, but approximately one, one million dollars is on the table. Um, the town's proposal includes replacement of the bathhouse and the dune walkover, as well as complete, uh, replacement of the amenities on-site, including addition of recycling containers, upgrade of the on-site wastewater system, uh, new wheel stops and replacement signage for the site. As a prerequisite for submitting this final application, we're required to hold a public hearing, um, to gain public feedback on the site plan in front of you today. Um, we have to submit our final application again by August the sixteenth, in order to be considered. Uh, David Ryan and Andy Gorman are here to answer any questions specific to site plan or budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions on the grant.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't believe we have anybody in the audience from the public to speak, so I, I'll ask, um, you and the clerk, have we heard from any of the public regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I'll ask, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Sears?
No, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Cahoon? Commissioner Brinkley? Okay. No questions. Thank you.
At this time, if there are any members of the public who'd like to come forward and address the application, if you'll please do so at this time, and state your name and address.
Good.
Seeing none, uh, Mr. Mayor, we will, uh, close the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Um, and I'll ask, uh, the board if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Motion that we approve as presented?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The, um, next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and Planning and Development Director, and I will call on Director Zanar.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. So just quickly on my director's report, before we go into, uh, the other items, uh, below that agenda item, um, the only items I really called out, uh, were the updates on Doughty Park events, which, uh, Paige Griffin certainly gave a good overview of, and we're excited for, uh, as well as the report on permitting for the fourth quarter, which I'm happy to go over, uh, any questions that the board may have on that, or anything else on, on, in the memo.
Thank you. Commissioners?
No questions.
Commissioner Cahoon?
I do, and this is probably, what is ETIPP?
Sure. Bear with me one second. It is the, I can't type up here, Energy Transitions, um, bear with me one second, because it's a long one. It's the Department of Energy Grant Program, or Technical Assistance Program, that we were accepted into. George Bonner, uh, with CSI, with Jeanette's, is our local, uh, technical assistant, and then we are, um, receiving assistance from the National Renewable Energy Lab. So it is... Energy Transitions Initiative Partnership Project. And again, it's Department of Energy, uh, and we are receiving technical assistance on that from the National Renewable Energy Lab and, and lab and Sandia National Lab. And we just finalized the scope for that project. I just received an email, um, this morning, actually, or, or yesterday evening, um, from the staff for the labs to finalize the scope and to schedule a meeting for, for initiating the next steps in that technical assistance.
Without the full scope, can you remind us what the, the outcome or the objective of that is?
Yeah, really, so, we are one of, of only a handful of island communities throughout the country, uh, that were accepted into this program, and it's really looking at how to leverage, uh, renewable energy, uh, resources and renewable energy, uh, to make, uh, these communities more resilient, uh, in all sense of the word, and, and, uh, for Agshead particularly, and, and Ocracoke is also accepted into the program, but for Agshead specifically, we're going to look at how, uh, renewable energy can be leveraged, uh, to make our facilities, public facilities, more resilient, primarily, uh, where, uh, hopefully, they can come up with ways, um, to ensure that they're electrified, Town Hall and, and other, um, important public facilities for, uh, forty-eight to seventy-two hours after an emergency event.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Sherr?
And the only other question I have, I read your information on the GIS platform. Are we coordinating at all with Dare County, since they seem to be so far ahead with GIS and, and getting our program up and running?
Yeah, we would, we would certainly leverage the resources, the data that Dare County has developed, any, I mean, we do that currently, uh, updating our platform and our data with, uh, data that Dare County has developed, and I think, any, um, if we were to make a more robust system, uh, locally with the town, any vendor or staff would rely on Dare County data. I think primarily, um, you know, when we did this, um, Phase One GIS, we, we released an RFI to seek out consultant services, and we partnered with all of the other municipalities in the county, except for, for Manio, to do that. Um, and there were varying degrees of needs between the municipalities, and Agshead is really the only one that has a public-facing GIS, uh, on our website. Um, but everyone has needs in terms of GIS, um, mapping needs, and a lot of the, the other municipalities, I think, were, were interested in, in services that could supplement what Dare County is able to do for them, and I think we are more focused on, um, kind of centralizing, or at least, um, figuring out a, a, a good organizational structure for how we manage GIS and how we provide that information out to the town and the public. I think the board, when we originally talked about this a few months ago, um, we hope that we are able to come up with something, or develop something that, um, ma, it makes more information available to the public, especially, you know, permitting information about active projects, where they can see that information mapped and available online. Um, and there are certainly vendors that can provide that to us.
Thank you.
I think in taking their, you know, their feedback as well as kind of looking at how the program operated, a few suggestions for perhaps improving the program if the board does want to consider, you know, another year of trying this cost-share program. I think, you know, some options as listed in the memo would be expanding the reach of this program to include things like cottage courts, residential condominium units. You know, for this pilot project, we really focused on getting it going, kind of figuring out how it would operate, and we really focused on single-family oceanfront homeowners. But perhaps it could be expanded to these other types of uses. Another idea that actually was brought up by a homeowner was if a homeowner works in conjunction with adjacent property owners, could perhaps we, you know, give them an incentive for working together, provide a little more reimbursement, maybe up to $600 instead of $500. Some did express interest in working together, which of course would be ideal. So, just wanted to get this before you, see if you had any questions, ideas, comments, and then if you would like to continue the program this year, we could perhaps begin earlier. So, you know, last year, we really just wanted to get it started, but there was a lot to work through, so as you may recall, we started in January. But, you know, perhaps this year, we could start in October and really expand that American beach grass planting season and take advantage of those fall months. I think that would be advantageous for people. That grass does seem to be more available, a little more resilient for planting, whereas sea oats tend to be a little harder to find, but hopefully, you know, hopefully through time, we'll have more options and nurseries for that. But at this time, if you have any questions, again, the main things were suggestions on making the program longer, so starting in October, perhaps expanding it to other types of properties, and then, you know, maybe incentivizing if homeowners want to work together. That would be another suggestion.
Okay. I'm sorry, a question. Where were the seven owners who took advantage of the program? Were they concentrated in one area of the town, or were they scattered?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'd say most of them were, most of them, 50% of them, were in South Nagshead. And there were a few, a few north of Jeanette's Pier, but most of them were in South Nagshead. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And do you have a sense of, you know, the $500 incentive for a property owner? If, you know, I would expect that that's fairly substantial if their property is 50 feet wide.
Correct.
But if we did expand it to condominiums or other developments like that, you know, those properties are going to be wider.
Correct.
Is this $500 going to be an adequate incentive to sort of motivate them? And I realize that condo associations are an entirely different animal altogether, and they'll have to handle it differently.
I think that's a good point, and I think in the memo, a suggestion for handling that would be you look at, for lots greater than 100 feet in width, you would, you could have like a fixed point, like $500 per additional 100 foot in width. So, yes, I guess that was the long answer to your question, but yes, more money would probably be a wise decision for those wider lots.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Some sort of equation like that, I think, would be important.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll ask board members if you have questions. Commissioner Foer?
If you're asking for direction, I'm in favor of extending the season. I'm in favor of flexibility on length by some formula, and I think that would be it from a board standpoint.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
I agree as well, the recommendations that you gave. I see no reason why we shouldn't adopt those and move forward.
Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Cahoon?
I agree. I like the extending of the time period. A couple of questions. The property owners that we used last year, were their lots 50 feet or 100 feet?
Most of them were 50 feet.
Okay. So, why wouldn't we be consistent if we're talking about expanding it? If there was 500 for every 50 feet, why wouldn't we make that consistent throughout the town instead of treating different types of property differently? That would address what your concern was about the length of the project, making it, I mean, I suggest we be, treat everybody the same. If it's 50 feet, it's 50 feet for 500 all the way along, not just suddenly doubling it to a minimum of 100 feet.
Yeah. Just want a clarification, on 40-foot lots, which there are a few of, you're at 500, right? Or 400? On a 40-foot lot, as you're asking.
Obviously, it was, obviously, the lots were based on residential, residential.
Correct.
If you go anywhere south of Forest Street, they're 40-foot lots.
Right. That's why I'm asking, but you're still at a minimum of 500.
Yes.
Okay.
But all I was saying was, let's treat everybody the same. But I do like the program. I think we need to encourage it to start sooner rather than later to give the grass its chance to take hold. Starting in January is getting a little late.
Okay.
I'm not even sure we even had everything ready in January. To me, it was, I think we started even a little bit later. But I'm wholeheartedly endorsing this program.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Kate, I endorse what you wrote in your memo. I would, and I applaud you for stepping forward to try to grow this program. I think it's something that's going to help beautify and keep our beaches where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds like an endorsement, so.
Okay.
So, let's proceed and see if we can get it done earlier and keep this program rolling. It's, you know, we're investing a lot in having a good, healthy beach, and the dunes are a big part of that, and the grasses are a big part of that, so.
Yes, I agree.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's just one additional point we wanted to make somewhat related to this. The town has had a partnership with Better Beaches OBX for the last several years, where we've been providing some of our beach nourishment funds towards purchasing of springing materials, and we'd like to continue to do that in addition to what Kate is doing. And so, if the board is okay with this, we would bring back a capital project ordinance amendment in September to allocate about $15,000 for the Better Beaches program. And then, I think for starters, we would do $20,000 towards Kate's effort, and then we can always amend that later in the season if we find that we're running out of funds, but that's what we would like to do.
All right. All right. Thank you, board. Any comments on that, or?
They do a great job.
They do. They really do. Do a great job. Wonderful. Thank you. Not yet seeing Ms. Womble. Then we will proceed, what I would suggest is that we proceed to the item G4 on the lighting, and then we take a brief recess following that discussion.
Good morning again. So, giving you a further update on the update I provided at the last meeting, but also an email I'd sent the board regarding the plans for Dominion to convert streetlights to LED, as well as their interest in offer to the town to do a demonstration of amber streetlights, which are perceived as being more turtle-friendly, nesting turtle-friendly. So, first, on the LED conversion, there were five locations where Dominion had pointed us to existing streetlights that had been converted to LED, and I had shared those with the board, just in hopes that you may be able to look at them and have a sense of whether there was a preference with regard to the style, with regard to the level of Generally, there were two styles that they pointed us to, and I would say that there are other styles in town. I think I indicated that, so, the styles they pointed us to were the Suburban Colonial, which are here, and also to, I believe, the Basic Cobra, which is here. I do know that there are some contemporary lights installed within town, but they did not point us to any of those that have already been converted to LED. There may be others, other lights that have, well, I know there are other lights that have been converted to LED by Dominion, so if there's an interest in looking at maybe even more, we can probably find some other examples for you. But I would tell you, at least all of the ones that we pointed you to are going to have the same correlated color temperature of 3,000. That's the lowest that Dominion sources and makes available. That is likely going to be a little bit whiter light than you would have seen with the high-pressure sodium lights that these are replacing. The lumens level is going to be an indicator of brightness, and if you took a look at these lights, you'll be able to correlate, I think, how the light appears with the level of lumens. The wattage, of course, is the energy usage. So, wattage is usage, and lumens is kind of output and kind of perceived as brightness of the light with the higher number indicating a more bright light. I would not recommend that we at least go with any light fixture that has a correlated color temperature greater than 3,000. I think you would probably not like the outcomes of that. And again, I think that there are certainly, if you looked at the one, particularly the one at Finch Street, which is right at the corner of Finch and 158, to me, it was a noticeable difference in terms of how bright the light is, and I don't know if that was something that the board, you know, was wanting to have. But I did look at, and I provided you a copy of the existing streetlight policy, and highlighted at least the sections that we would need to consider updating or changing with a different spec. One thing we don't do in the current policy is specify the light style, the fixture style. So, we don't specify that you have to have any one of these. It just so happens that the predominant lights that have been installed are either the Suburban Colonial, the Contemporary Colonial, or Contemporary, rather, and Cobra. Dominion has said we can certainly pick from any of these, and I think you can find for most of these a spec, you know, the specs are pretty comparable, there's multiple variations in the specifications, so I don't believe any of these would preclude you from getting the spec that you need in terms of the brightness of the light or the correlated color temperature. The board may not wish to specify a preference for style, and we may just want to stick with the, kind of the limits on lumens and correlated color temperature, which is what you do today. Right now, for instance, in new residential subdivisions, we specify, "Streetlights shall be high-pressure sodium, 70 watt and 5,000 lumens." And one of the things I gave you is at least some information on what kind of the comparable LED would be, and, let's see, I believe, so, for example, where the policy specifies a high-pressure sodium fixture with 70 watts and 5,000 lumens, Dominion's specifications would suggest an LED fixture with 33 watts and 3,291 or 3,665 lumens as an equivalent. There, it's interesting, because if you, that's what Dominion would specify, but if there's calculations that will get you a little bit closer to the existing lumen level of what these are replacing, but again, it's going to probably appear more bright because of the color temperature. And so, that's probably it on the streetlights. On the amber lights, again, Dominion wanted some locations, ideally four locations, if it was agreeable to the town where they could do a demonstration of amber lights, and we provided, you know, several beach accesses and then East Tides Drive, where there are actually two lights in close proximity to one another, where I would tell you a demonstration there might be good because you could really compare one light over another.
Right.
So, happy to answer any questions or take any direction the board has on this.
When we rewrite the ordinance to the extent necessary, I'm wondering, I mean, those are incredibly specific standards, and, you know, at that point, nobody saw LEDs coming, so that was okay. I wonder if we can, you know, we don't know what's coming after LEDs, if anything, and so, the important things would be the lumens on the ground and the color. Those standards are probably not going to change, and so, I don't know if you've given any thought to that, but the, I don't really personally have an objection to, on streetlights in some of our locations, to it being a little bit lighter, brighter on the ground. And the color that I've seen so far is satisfactory, as long as it's, you know, I just, I don't want anything that's blue, and what we're getting is pretty white, and so, and I do look forward to the amber, seeing the amber demonstration. That may be something that we really like a lot, so. Board? Commissioner Sears?
Nothing more than you said.
Commissioner Cahoon?
I don't want to get into micromanaging what type of, what fixtures we use or whatever. I don't think that's where we need to be. My only thought process is as we move further over on our beach accesses, if we're going to put lights closer to the ocean, that we consider those that are more sensitive to turtle nesting and dark sky.
Yep.
Because they did have some listed that were conducive to dark sky.
Yes.
So, I think we need to be cognizant of perhaps having two different type of things, one for roadway and one for access.
One for access points. That's a good observation. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley? Yeah. That's good. Commissioner Foer?
Just a couple of things, and this applies more to, it might not be streetlighting policy, but it might be practice, and we have historically put streetlights to every subdivision on the west side of the bypass on each side. And I know you've heard me talk about this before. And to me, I think the Colonial does not satisfy the need, but the traditional Colonial would satisfy the need for those.
Subdivision entrances.
Yeah. The traditional provides a little bit higher profile, where the other tends to be more for residential. That's one. If we go to any sort of the decorative shoebox on the Cobra-type things, it's the one I just prefer. That's a personal choice. I hate the Expressway. I think it shines out. And then, one thing that, as far as in the past, we've used a lot of, and this goes to Commissioner Cahoon's point, we've used a lot of contemporary at our beach accesses, and then staff has to go out with a black spray paint and spray paint the light because it's shining in somebody's bedroom window, not just for the turtles, but also for the neighbor. It shines out, and so, we've gone and just had to spray paint them. So, contemporary may look good at first, but that's a spread, a 360 spread, that a lot of people don't like coming into parking lots.
Right.
We could certainly look at a more directed light at accesses that's directing the light downward rather than something like this.
Yeah. I mean, you know, obviously, that was the one years ago, and then, of course, there was some backlash, but here, again, my main concern is, real on the west side, we still provide some sort of lighting on each side of the entranceway to the subdivisions, and what I looked at, the traditional Colonial provided the best alternative.
Yeah. I think, and I think the, I think we have the traditional Colonial in Nagshead Acres. I think that's what we have in there, and they kind of have disappeared at this point. You know, visually, you just don't, you really don't pick up on them anymore, so. Yeah, but it will be nice if some of them are a little brighter, you know, because they're, you know, they're given the spacing, and it can be dark between fixtures.
So, we can bring back to the board a updated revised policy for consideration. We'll put it on, I assume, leave, we can put it on the consent agenda, and I'll let Dominion know that we would like to pursue. And I'll let Dominion know that we would like to pursue the amber demonstration. And I'll let the board know when that's done and in place.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. I believe all the parties are present now who we need for this hearing. So we're going to take, the board is going to take about a 10-minute recess, and then we will come back to item G2. All right, the board has returned to session, and we will circle back to item G2, consideration of the SED-80 zoning district plan for tree removal. And I'll call on Kelly.
It's a big packet of material. Let's try to go ahead and blow this out.
Thirty pages for three trees.
Yeah. Okay, so what we're going to talk about today is a request being made by Louis Safar for the removal of three trees within the SED-80 ordinance. Those trees are greater than 16 inches in caliber. And the way our SED-80 zoning ordinance, the district site requirements reads is that any tree greater than 16 inches in caliber does require the review and approval by the Board of Commissioners. So I'll go through the staff report very quickly. As we noted, the applicant is Louis Safar. We're here to talk about the removal of three trees that exceed 16 inches in caliber. This is a property located at 468 West Villa Dunes Drive. It is a split-zoned property. I would say that the entirety, well, the home that is being proposed, where these trees are located, is located entirely within the SED-80 district, which is the more stringent district. The property in terms of the comprehensive plan is located in both the conservation designation, as well as within the significant natural areas, character area. And we've provided excerpt of those designations in your packet for your review. Getting down into the specific information and the review standards, I would say that going through the SED-80 ordinance and all the code sections, it's a, it's a little bit of a tongue twister going through all of this. And each section kind of just sends you to a different section. So it's a little bit circular, but I would kind of just condense that and say that the SED ordinance, SED-80 ordinance places an emphasis on the protection of the natural areas within the forest, the vegetation, as well as the topography. We can go, we can dig into any of these sections in more detail if you would like. But essentially, what it does is it provides two mechanisms for tree removal within the SED-80. And the first mechanism relates to trees that are four inches in caliber to 16 inches in caliber. We want to know that those trees are being removed. We want the board to be aware that those trees are being removed, but the removal of those trees can be handled administratively. The second item is that when a tree greater than 16 inches in caliber is being proposed for removal, we want to make sure that those trees are being looked at by the Board of Commissioners, and the removal of those trees is going to be required to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Essentially, as part of this, we need the board to take into consideration that because of the topography, the topography of the site and the overall development suitability, so that the structure shall be constructed in such a way that there is no other opportunity for the primary structure to be relocated, resituated, to prohibit or to make the removal of these trees unnecessary. So as staff has gone through this, we do believe that they have cited the structure in such a way to minimize the number of trees that do need to be removed, and to essentially minimize the number of trees greater than 16 inches in caliber that need to be removed. There is some criteria that the board needs to consider. It's provided in your packet. But as I stated before, is the proposed building site the most suitable in that it is in areas requiring the absolute minimum alteration of natural vegetation, topography, and groundwater? Is the existing unforested land be considered the most suitable building site? Whether the building site, given the removal of trees, is the most suitable in that it disturbs the minimum number of healthy trees and vegetation? And that there is no reasonable alternative building site and/or supporting facilities can be located on a lot, or the removal is necessary for the constructed improvements? So those are the things that you want to take into consideration. Like I said, what is being requested of the board is the review and approval for the removal of three trees that are greater than 16 inches in caliber. The applicant has provided a survey, color-coded, which has been incredibly helpful, so that you can see the trees that are being proposed to be removed. The green Xs are the trees that are between four inches and 16 inches in caliber. The red Xs are those trees that are greater than 16 inches in caliber. And the red circles indicate those areas where there's significant trees, and they are making special efforts to keep those trees safe during construction. So I realize my staff report was a little roundabout, much like the ordinance is very roundabout, but essentially, what they're seeking is approval for the removal of these three trees. And we do have Brian Ravino, the engineer, and the applicant Louis Safar available if you have questions for them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'll ask the board, I'll start down at this end with Commissioner Sears, if you have questions for Kelly or the applicants.
No questions ready.
Okay, move on. Commissioner Cooh?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley. Commissioner Fuller. Okay, great. I see no questions. Thank you. Since you had no questions, I take it the board doesn't need to hear from the applicant. It sounds like a motion is ready to be made.
I'd make a motion to approve the removal of the three trees requested, as stated on this survey.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second, then. Any further discussion?
I just think it was a good site plan to be presented. I thought there was a lot of work done by the applicant and commend the applicant.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to new business, and that will be committee reports. I'll start down at this end with Commissioner Fuller.
The only thing I would say is, as it relates to the tourist bureau, there is movement on the development of a concept to develop a fiscal structure on the event site. It's gone through the committee that was appointed by the tourist bureau. It's been presented to the tourist bureau and subsequently to the Dare County Board. The Dare County Board discussed it and unanimously accepted it. The thing is, it was asked that it be done in resolution form. That resolution hadn't been developed yet. So the county board has accepted it, but it will still be forthcoming with a resolution. So that would be something that the tourist bureau would be working on in their future. I assume where we are at the next phase would be staff from the tourist bureau and staff of the town to get together and start working on, looking at what the concept is and developing something that would be probably presented to the tourist bureau first, then to Dare County, I mean, to Nagshead Board.
All right, thank you. A question for you, because this hadn't occurred to me until just now. The task force that you and I served on was envisioned to work to this point. Do you think that this task force is going to have a role going forward, or is that the end of the role of the task force?
I think that the task force has not been disbanded yet.
Okay.
It remains to be seen. I would think that one of the processes that will be employed would be a lot of public discussion, public participation, and at some point, it might be the task force that facilitates that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Brinkley.
Jeanette's Pier Advisory Committee, Mike Director Remidge, sent out the fourth quarter report. Something important that took place was the 10-year anniversary of Jeanette's Pier. I guess the rebirth of Jeanette's Pier was May 21st, 2021. They are, of course, this report was done prior to some of the events that have occurred over the last couple of weeks, but they were having more weddings and the pier attendance was going up. They are having staffing shortages like most places here, and that's, they've had to cut down hours, but it was a, it was a good report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I have something else I'll bring up in the mayor's agenda, and I apologize if Commissioner Sears may be planning to bring this up about the sprinkler question or the fire protection Since our last meeting, the mayors met with Representative Bobby Hannig, and we do have a meeting set, I forget the date, with our group to talk about the form that a sprinkler ordinance might take. And there was, I brought that up, I brought the question up to Representative Hannig as to, you know, whether the legislature would intervene or what kind of view they might take. Not intervene, but what kind of view the legislature might take of a local initiative like this. And he was frankly supportive. This is a discussion that they've had in Kirtuk County before he became a representative. And so we are going to meet and talk about perhaps an incentive-based approach that we might take to put sprinklers on the table as an option for our houses. So we'll keep you updated as we move along. Commissioner Cooh?
I have not had a meeting of the GovEd TV, but what's come out of that is that the president of COA is going around to all the municipalities, making presentations, and would ask that he be invited to come to perhaps our September meeting for a short presentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll look forward to that. Madam Clerk, if you'll make sure that we issue that invitation, please. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I have nothing to report from my committees.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a resolution in support of the...
Time-specific.
Oh, is it time, time for that? Yes, it is. Thank you. Appreciate you catching that. At this time, then, we will move to, it's 10:30, we will move to item J1, which is presentation of the Public Works Master Plan. I guess I'll call on Andy to introduce this.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. We've been working on this project for several months now. This is something that the board had initiated last year to do a master plan for our Public Works facilities. This will include everything over on Lark Avenue and Pond Avenue, including the water plant and the bulk yard, brush yard, and the main Public Works site. As this was included in the board's CIP and budget, this project envisioned doing sort of a redevelopment of these properties to analyze future Public Works needs over a long-term horizon and look at providing facilities that would project our future needs and accommodate growth and bring us up to speed with what our, what our needs would be for fleet, sanitation, facilities maintenance, administration, water operations, and water distribution. We have contracted with DJG Consultants to help us with this effort, as well as working with staff. We have Donald Booth, Julie Dunks, and Darren Curtis with DJG here today to present this. We also have our town engineer, David Ryan, has been helping with this effort. Our new Public Works Director, Eric Clausen, has been heavily involved, as well as our Public Works Superintendents, Charlie Bliven with fleet, Nancy Carawan with water, and then Mike Norris with Facilities and Sanitation are all here, and we can all answer questions. I think the main point we want to make with the board is that this is obviously your first chance to really see and talk about this. And so we're showing this to you essentially for the first time, and so we're not asking you to really make any decisions today. Just absorb the information, certainly ask questions, and we'll have another time to get together to go back over some of your thoughts. We can make revisions to this. It's a draft, and, you know, we look forward to possibly coming back next month with more details about phasing and asking for your direction on how we would move forward. So with that said, I'll go ahead and introduce Donald Booth. He's going to give the presentation, and then we'll just sort of break out into the question and answer session.
Thank you, Andy. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. It's our pleasure to be here today to really try to give you a high-level overview of the activities that have been happening over the last six months or so, as well as try to really present the evolution of this and really look forward to the feedback that you can begin to provide us as this relates. And I'm going to see if I can start a slideshow here. I'm not sure what's supposed to happen. There it goes. So February of 2021, our team commenced working with the staff, both within Public Works as well as the town, conducting a series of interviews. We issued a series of questionnaires, really fact-finding about the current operations, the current spaces that existed, the current uses that were on the site. We conducted a series of facility tours, took existing stock of equipment inventory that existed, as well as future plans for procurement of inventory that may be projected and/or identified within future needs. And based upon all of that information, we put together a summary of a program that then was brought back to the town for verification that we've captured not only the existing conditions, as well as what, looking into the future, what future growth may involve both in staffing, as well as in equipment and needs associated with the delivery of their services. Following that, we went into a series of design developments, looking at planning, planning options, conducted a development charrette with all of the parties that were involved, really trying to do a deeper dive into what exactly is needed on this site for the foreseeable future. At the end of the day, this is a very basic facility program, broken up by the major users within Public Works, the administration building. Really, about 3,600 square feet currently, and it's envisioned that that kind of meets the need moving into the future. Obviously, with technology, some of the file storage and some of those things kind of go away, but those areas get repurposed for better uses within that. Fleet maintenance, certainly looking at expansion of the ability to service the fleet of the town. Facilities and... Facilities and sanitation, with many of their equipment pieces currently being stored outdoors, looking to find better ways to protect, maintain, and have a long life for those pieces of equipment. And then the water department, primarily focusing on the distribution side of the water department and the equipment that they have to maintain the water distribution through the town. And then the need for a recycling facility for both citizen and town collection and ultimate disposal, recycling of those efforts.
May I ask you a question right now?
Yes, sir.
Under existing, are you saying that that's adequate right now and that future is what we're going to need in the future, or are you identifying in existing any deficits? Or will that come in your presentation?
That'll come in the presentation.
Okay, sorry.
The general recommendation is that we took the survey of what currently was there, and if we were identifying future needs, that's to bring it both for current operations, elevated to what levels of services may be lacking today, but also forecasting that future need within that.
I'm sorry.
No, quite all right. Please do. Through this planning and charrette process, we really tried to zero in, looking at the existing site, its existing uses, the current layout, what potential layouts existed there, what zoning restrictions may be existing at the property. Stormwater management, obviously, is a significant challenge around town if we just look outside today, and so certainly capturing that at this site. Building parking capacities, site security with that, really looking at the public interface with the Public Works operation, but also what is town function and what is internal to the Public Works operation. That starts to get into traffic circulation of those flows of people and vehicles. What are the bulk storage needs, both for town operations, as well as for collection and disposal, whether it be recycling or other, CND debris or other materials? And are there existing facilities that can remain and should remain as part of this? So taking a brief pause to look at the existing conditions, the existing site to the east of Lark is primarily the bulk storage and collection operations, and that's a primary point of public interface. The larger facility that is here houses both Public Works admin, houses fleet maintenance, and houses the water distribution team, all within one shared facility there. There is a separate facilities building that houses the facility group with equipment staging and other areas stored around that. And then the current water plant currently exists to the north of the parcel there. Would like to do a very brief, high-level overview of the zoning that currently exists within this site. And Darren, would you like to give a quick overview of that?
Absolutely. Mayor, Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity. Just going to run through some of the assets of the property and the constraints that may exist and the surrounding uses. We have, some of the good news is that we have, surrounding uses are C3 commercial, which is, makes it pretty compatible with the proposed use and the current use, and that there's no real buffers required. That being said, there may be some locations where it would be beneficial to provide some sort of buffer from adjacent use, just to be cognizant of the use on the property. So some of the constraints that we have, the freshwater pond is immediately to the west, as you probably know, from the water plant there. And with that comes several, well, maybe not several, but it has CAMA constraints and restrictions, CAMA regulations. Some of those are that the septic setback, there is a septic drain field and septic tank setback 500 feet from that pond. So we have to be strategic about those facilities being provided. There's a restriction for one system on a lot between 500 feet and 1,200 feet from the pond, which probably doesn't really come into play here, but it does exist. The water plant is currently zoned SED 80. The lot coverage requirement on SED 80 zoning is 15%. And there is no structures or parking permitted 50 feet from the water and wetlands in an SED 80 zoning. The remainder of the properties, the, I'll call it the main property, where admin and fleet maintenance and sanitation are currently, that's a C3 zoning, as well as the recycling area is a C3 zoning. With that comes a lot coverage that is contingent upon the location adjacent to the pond, the freshwater pond. If the property is 0 to 500 feet from the pond, lot coverage is a 30% maximum, and 500-plus feet from the pond is 45%. And we do have that 500-foot line drawn. It's a little bit difficult to see, but it angles from about the middle of the fleet maintenance site, angles to the northeast. You can see it there, just exactly parallel with the pond there. And 500-plus feet from the pond is a 45% maximum lot coverage. Fueling areas are required to be 500 feet from the pond. Stormwater infiltration, 500 feet from the pond and C3 zoning. And open space requirements, 0 to 500 feet from the pond are 40% minimum, and 500-plus feet from the pond are 30% minimum. So these are all things that were considered. Some other assets are, there is an existing BMP south of your recycling center, which is half of that, approximately half of that BMP is on your property. That is an asset, and that some of that storage, the volume of retention that can be provided as runoff from your property, it's about 50% of that pond's storage can be from your property. So that is an asset. And there's also an existing BMP, a retention pond, a wetland area that is, a manufactured wetland area that is, excuse me, that is west of the existing sanitation building there that we propose to potentially relocate as part of the new layout. Did I miss any constraints? All righty, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Darren. So moving forward, there's been iteration after iteration, the team has kind of tackled, solicited feedback, worked with your team that's been shadowing us through this process. And we're really here to present you a couple of options, and the primary alternates really kind of relate to the water and the northern portion of the site. With this, I'll start at the eastern parcel. It's proposed with this option that all of the public interaction with Public Works really be located within the development of this eastern parcel. So it's envisioned that this would include the Public Works Administration Building, would include the recycling center and drop-off area, and then this kind of creates the public interface isolated, separated from the town operations aspects of the property. Maintains your security, can allow you to secure the western side of the Lark Avenue, such that that's only accessible by town staff, which have reason to be there and have credentials to access that site and afford you with that extra level of security. As you move to the western side of Lark Avenue, the main parcel here is envisioned to be redeveloped, to have a shared fleet maintenance and facilities and sanitation building that would have some shared assets that the team members there can utilize for toilets, showers, restrooms, between the existing operations of each of those areas. The personnel, the staff of the town has an area to park and safely traverse to their operations. These entrances up here, the top two entrances are envisioned to house the fueling for the town's fleet, so both the Public Works operations, as well as other town operations, police, fire, others who have, need to access the fueling operations. Car wash operation, again benefiting all the town operations. And then as you work to the rear of the site, housing the larger assets of sanitation vehicles and larger equipment that the Public Works staff has, what's currently envisioned as covered parking and vehicle storage within that area. Certainly, we can discuss whether those need to be fully enclosed or open structures, but currently detailed as open structures in what we're presenting today. As we move to the north, option one proposes to utilize the existing gate and the existing roadway driveway that provides access back to the police operations that are on that site, looking to have some bulk storage opportunities for the town off of that. These really are operations that may include the lifesaving stations out of season and those type of operations. Again, not directly connected with Public Works on a day-to-day operational basis, but certainly a need that the town has that's currently been housed at this parcel. And would be proposed to utilize a former right-of-way that's kind of shared with Killdevil Hills to access at the northern edge of the property to a new water distribution building that, again, would be shared with water operations for its employee-facing functions, toilets, showers, restrooms, to support their operations, and have the equipment storage and the operations of the distribution team and the ops sharing that northern end of the property. Should, down the road, that prove to be problematic, it's believed that that's a desired shared operation there, that Town of Killdevil Hills could get behind, based on some early conversations, but that's details to be worked out once final decisions are made. We do have an alternate operation, which could bring a new entrance in, in order to provide space to bring water distribution to the south side of the water plant, should that become necessary, if that northern option is not available to the town. This still maintains some of that bulk storage and other town needs at the property, continuing to isolate them from the main operations side of Public Works. So these are the two site options that we've developed to date to present to you today, and we've got packets that we can leave with you guys as you do leave here today. We would like to talk about, well, how do you go about building something like this? We've got to continue to maintain the operations, and how can this be phased and implemented such that the town services continue to operate and exist? And so at the end of the day, there's really four major chunks of development, and three of them can happen in any order, as the town ultimately sees. The fourth one, there's kind of, is associated with the ultimate vehicle storage for the sanitation trucks and the larger assets, and this really is in an open space on the site that's going to be needed to help maintain those operations as the other phases get brought online. So the one phase is really the redevelopment of fleet and the facility sanitation group. In this scenario, the building is situated approximately where the existing BMP is located, but this facility could be constructed in multiple phases, such that the existing fleet and administration building can remain in operation while the contractor develops the new BMP, brings in the new utility infrastructure, creates the new entrances coming into the parcel, such that this facility can be developed, most likely developed in a split phase, such that the facilities and sanitation department end of the building is constructed. While they're still operating out of their existing portion of the site, they then could relocate to the new facility while the drain field in the second half of the fleet maintenance gets constructed. All the while, fleet maintenance is continuing to operate out of their existing facility. Ultimately, for the build-out of this, the existing facility would need to come down. There's a couple of other users that are involved there, water distribution, as well as Public Works admin. So temporary quarters could be created for Public Works admin, either within this new building that's built, or in some temporary structure depending upon the sequence of events. And water could temporarily operate out of one of these proposed future bays for fleet, very similar to how they're operating today in the existing bay that they have within that existing facility. Another pretty standalone phase is the administrative phase and the public side of Public Works to create the recycle yard. This really would involve the complete redevelopment of that eastern side of the site. And the only detail to be worked out in that sequence of events is ultimately what the emergency preparation plans are. If we want to do a single generator that serves the entire operations, both east and west, or if the town wants to do multiple pieces of equipment, so maybe there's redundancy and some other things built into that emergency preparation plan. If only one generator's provided, most ideal location would be to keep that on the western side of the site, and then just create a power connection to that emergency generator to serve the eastern site. So some details that would need to be worked out in that equation. The water distribution phase, again, fairly standalone, looking at redeveloping the northern portion of this site. Option one, option two, very similar in their efforts to construct the new distribution facility to support that, as well as the associated parking and other vehicle storage needs that may be there. And then the final phase, and this was the one that I kind of alluded to, right now, a primary route of circulation on the site kind of bisects where this proposed vehicle storage is proposed to go, which does access portions of this northern site that's currently there, does access some of the other operations that traverse through this site. And so ultimately, this really kind of needs to be your final phase of development, or incorporated into your final phase of development, once the water team, the administrative team, and the facilities and sanitation, or fleet and facilities, sanitation team, excuse me, is redeveloped. Looking at orders of magnitude of cost, as, I don't think it's any surprise that the economy's kind of been on a roller coaster in the supply and demand side. We've tried to take our best forecast of what the project would cost should it be developed in 2022, so trying to escalate into next year, not understanding a final phasing plan. It's kind of hard to make any other projections beyond that, and that would be a future step that we would encourage as we look into phasing and how much wants to be borrowed at any one phase. Current magnitude under $2022 is approximately $14 million to do the redevelopment of the parcel. And to give you an approximate breakdown of those by the four phases that are identified, we've tried to give you order magnitudes of those phases, again, looking at $2022. That's all that I have from a presentation, and I'm happy to do my best, or we can lean on the team to weigh in on questions that are outside of my purview.
Commissioner Sears?
All right. Start me first. Erp. Sorry. Yeah. Can you? You know, it would have been very helpful, not to say that you haven't in some ways done a great job on this, but from my standpoint, to have an overlay with the existing and then to be able to transpose what you're putting on it, so that we can see some of the changes. Of course, relating from this drawing to our GIS to see where the buildings are added and moved, that would, you know, that would be helpful in that measure. Also, when you put out the terms, you projected your growth with that. How did you do your projections? And do we have, would this facility grow with the town and the area so that we're not having, or the Town of Naggshead's not having, because I don't think any of us will be here in 50 years, but having that discussion in 50 years? Did we look that far, or did you just look to, you know, 10 years down the road?
So a lot of the future growth was based on interviews and questionnaires, based on current services provided, current inventory that was there, trying to forecast spaces for the ability to accommodate, for example, in fleet, expanding the fleet operations within their footprint, to have more vehicles under repair, which then... within their footprint to have more vehicles under repair, which then obviously requires additional staffing if those are turning on a daily basis. So we certainly have tried to make a projection into the future, what 50 years looks like versus 30 years. Obviously, we're looking, we're all looking in crystal balls at that point. The important takeaway, I believe, is that based upon the spread-out development that's been proposed, most of these facilities could be expanded in the future, meaning we're not building two chunks right tight to one another where you couldn't come in and do an expansion 25 years from now, should the services demand that, service changes or technology or otherwise. And so, for example, along the shared facility here, if you need more facilities, buildings, certainly the opportunity to potentially expand to the east or expand to, excuse me, east or west with additional bays certainly starts to exist within some of the planning that's there.
Gotcha. And from our standpoint, I can't speak for them, we haven't seen any of the office space or any of the interior drawings for that matter. And you mentioned two more people in, I think, your administrative offices. So are you planning for two, or are you planning for six? I mean, could that administrative office be built there off of Lark Street, large enough to house all the administration while we're doing this move and then separate, and then you have future expansion? I mean, was that a thought in process, you know, how we're going to build this in stages and how they're going to move? Because, you know, it may be a small town, but we have a large operation and we, as a town, demand a lot of service, and we don't want to sacrifice on that. And we want to give our staff as much as we possibly can to do the best job they can do. So was that considered in that, or enough expansion for that?
It absolutely was. The administration building, to be specific, is considered to be potentially a two-story structure where the current operations primarily could exist within the lower level of that. The potential second-floor use could be a training operation under, if you need to pull all of the departments together to have a larger training operation, certainly could operate in some storm preparedness cleanup response or emergency preparedness. But then certainly as your town staff increases, that certainly is staged and sited for a future build-out of an expanded administrative operations with additional offices, conference rooms, port spaces as may be necessary for that. So certainly, we're trying to plan for the footprint and the ability to both go vertical within that. And it certainly would be less dollars to build the shell today and outfit it in the future when the demand drives that. But we certainly are trying to have those conversations as we've looked at the staging of how you can build new while the existing continues to operate.
And the maintenance expansion of that maintenance department, would that give our maintenance department the equivalent to, say, a Freightliner type of shop operation? That they could handle anything? Would we have lifts? Would we have capabilities to put lifts? Would we have those abilities to perform tasks that maybe higher-end engineer or techs that can do jobs so we don't have to, you know, have fleet time down?
The facility certainly would be designed to house those operations, whether the equipment was initially installed on day one or there is a future, a future equipment purchase to have the high-load lifts and the other safety mechanisms that would be necessary to do that certainly would be a planning tool of when's the right time to make that execution of that. But certainly, the bays that you see there for fleet, for example, you'll notice that it's envisioned that there's doors on both sides of that which would allow for, for example, your large fire truck to drive in one side and drive out the other. And should they be doing, need to do lift work on that, having a high-capacity lift to do that would certainly be capable within one of those bays.
And I trust that, when we have qualified staff here today that work in each one of those departments, I trust that we've met, or at least most of their wishes have been encompassed in this?
Based on the feedback that we've gotten, but I certainly would encourage anyone else to kind of chime in accordingly.
Well, we've got Mike Norris and Charlie Loon here. Y'all can certainly come in if you'd like. We have, we have had, as Don mentioned, a charrette, several meetings with all the staff, including, you know, Nancy, Charlie, and I think the designs tried to address what they thought our future needs would be. And so that's what we're seeing over there. They haven't been to add. We've all met with Eric.
Can you come out and talk?
Mike, could you come?
Good morning. We've all met with Eric, the new Public Works Director, and gone over everything, multiple meetings. To be honest with you, I think if Eric came up, he could probably walk through everything and voice for us everything we've interacted with him and spoke to him about.
Ted. Can I just make one clarification real quick? The initial table that described the space needs, you know, it talked about 3,600 square feet for admin. And I may have to verify this, but when we look at that, it's the existing easternmost side of the Public Works building today, which includes, you know, the office manager, Karen, Sue Cummings, the receptionist, Eric's office, there's a separate office, and then upstairs, you've got the superintendent's office, and you've got a shop area, bathroom and break room. And I think that's the 3,600 square feet you're referring to. But the new design, you know, those people downstairs, Eric, Karen and Sue would be in the new building. However, the folks that are upstairs, the superintendents, would all have all the space in the new building where they are. So it sort of breaks apart everybody that's using the existing building into two separate spaces, so there is more space. And you didn't see floor plans. Eventually, you can see those, that'll show up. We're still looking at that and trying to work out how much space we actually need in office space. But that's just a point of clarification.
Mayor members of the board, I'll add that I came in after this process, the interview process had already happened with DJG, so I kind of got a fresh perspective, also bring some experience from running, having a master plan or going through the process of master planning for a Public Works facility. So we had worked side-by-side with DJG to go through several iterations. I think you saw on that one slide, there were probably three different examples. That probably doesn't do it justice. We probably went through six or seven different iterations to try to get it right. So again, I think all the, we, they took each one of those interviews that had been held with each one of the staff members or superintendents, we collaborated on that, figured out how we best function, how to make the best use of the site where we can share some, share some operations, and we ultimately came up with this. So I feel like it's been a tremendous collaboration. Again, I just want to stress that we've gone through a number of iterations to get to this point. And from a site function, a public use function, I feel like this is the best use of the site, you know, when you take all those things into consideration. But again, all the input of staff as far as what those future needs were taken into consideration, and we kind of melded those together with what the site layout looks like today.
All right. The only other thing I would have is, we're in a very erosive salt environment, and I would rather, if we're going to spend 14, I'd rather spend 16 and put walls on those areas or just leave the roof off so the water will rinse the salt off. One of the two?
Yeah, absolutely. And we had that discussion actually with the design folks yesterday, so definitely taking that into consideration. Capital, our capital equipment is one of our highest-budget items, so again, we want to make sure that that's protected.
And one last question, is one of those wash bays heated?
We, well, we haven't really gotten into that, gotten into that detail yet, but yeah, definitely that's something to take into consideration as well as, you know, what kind of agents do you have to spray down the equipment for non-corrosive attributes and that sort of thing? So yes, yes, sir.
Bless you.
We've been presented with two different kind of schematics here, or two different visions. According to what the acting manager told us yesterday, one requires a whole lot more work on the part of this board to make it happen, and I'd like to hear from either staff or other members of planning department about which vision that they see being preferred, because one of them does make a huge difference in what, how the town reacts.
Andy? She's talking about removing the zoning challenges.
I'm talking about issues as well as dealing with, you know, KDA agents.
The option one, and that's not this option, the option one, which had the water distribution shop up by water operations. When Eric came into this, he sort of identified that as maybe a preferred option. You know, you would have the water operations and distribution staff all right together so they could share facilities pretty readily. This would require vacating the right-of-way of Eighth Street from where it intersects Pond Avenue to the edge of the pond. I did reach out to the town manager with Kill Devil Hills and let her know that we were looking at this option. She said that they would be open to considering that. Obviously, she can't commit anything for their town, but that it would certainly allow us more flexibility in bringing in a drive aisle and putting the shop there. It would alleviate the setback for the width of that half of the right-of-way. So it would rely on that. It might not take as much work, but it would certainly take more coordination. You know, maybe Eric or Nancy could elaborate more on how much that would be preferred. It would certainly eliminate some of that additional internal circulation, too. And so when we look at lot coverage, having something on that northern part of the site would require less drive aisle space.
That would not be this one, though. That would be the other one, correct?
That would be the other one.
Okay.
I'll try to go back to it. See, there it is, right there.
So the challenge is right-of-way.
Right-of-way is the biggest one. Both options, you're going to have lot coverage issues that we're going to have to work out. I think I'd mentioned that to the board members. You know, this is an SED-80 property. You know, we looked at what facilities could be removed from the site and not impact the potential to, you know, bring back some of the water operations activities that existed prior with the Fresh Pond. Obviously, the tanks take up a lot of space, 6,700 square feet apiece, I believe. And so even if you took away one of those tanks, I think we would still have a couple thousand square feet of lot coverage to make up with that 15%. And then we know we're going to have to apply for a CAMA variance no matter what we do, so all this would be taken as a package to CAMA when we look at septic systems and the BMPs. And we've gotten feedback from CAMA preliminarily that they would not necessarily object to any of this, and there's nothing in our land use plan that would point to this being in conflict with our policies. The water plant, you know, some of you probably know the history on the water plant side much better than I do. We've tried to look at that a little bit. You know, it certainly doesn't, it abuts the Fresh Pond. It certainly has more of a C3 appearance than the rest of the SED-80 district. You know, one of the things that you could look at is if you were to consider rezoning the water plant site to C3, as Darren mentioned, there's a limitation on coverage within 500 feet of the Fresh Pond. And so right now, it's 15% with SED-80. With the C3, the most you could go up to is 30% because you've got that limitation within 500 feet. So it doesn't open up that property to, you know, a typical C3 property because you still have got the limitation within 500 feet of the Fresh Pond. Just throwing that out there for your thoughts. But I believe the option one would be the preferred option of staff.
Is anybody from the water? May I?
Yes.
Does anybody from the water department have any thoughts about the two tanks that are there? Because there was some discussion yesterday about removing one.
The one I believe is talking about removing would be the one that we used to have as a sed basin that we no longer use. The one to the east, that's our ground storage tank for the plant, so we wouldn't want to move that.
Let's answer my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Only one. I do know that there are rules getting ready to come down from CAMA about possibly changing how land use plans are viewed, that the towns, towns or counties or whatever would be asked to determine which parts that are, were to avoid this conflict between what the town has in its policies versus what CAMA needs to make a determination, that there be things identified if towns want those to be determinations.
On the zoning question, I find it a little odd that this is SED-80 and I'm not, it's not clear to me why we would necessarily want to preserve that. I mean, we have C3 adjoining to the south. Does Kill Devil Hills have an environmental zoning? I don't think that they, that the adjacent property in Kill Devil Hills, not that that matters in terms of rezoning, but that zoning across the line is, I believe, an industrial zoning. I don't, I don't think they have a environmental zone of any type that adjoins our property. So I don't know. If it's beneficial, you know, I would be in favor of exploring that question. I don't, given the way it's used, I'm not sure why it needs to remain.
Commissioner Brinkley?
I'm excited about the, whoever I'm talking to. Whoever's up there. I'm excited about the plan. Having been a retired employee here, I see the deficiencies in the current site. This has been needed for a long time, so I'm excited to at least take a first look at what possibly could be there. I would echo what Commissioner Sears said about the, if you're going to put a shed like or a covered area, let's go and put sides on it and really protect, like you said, Eric, the capital equipment, you know, our trash trucks, front-end loaders and stuff. This, the area that we're in, we all know is bad, but I do look forward to future presentations and seeing what we're, see what direction we're headed in. And I appreciate the opportunity that the staff has had to participate in this discussion because they, they are the ones that's working in it. They are the ones that really know what they need, and I appreciate the input that they've been able to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fuller?
Just, well, I do have a couple of things. First, on the existing retention pond that we have a right of 50% of, is that still a managed pond with a weir system with drainage? Do you know what I'm referring to?
Yes, I'm not familiar with how discharge is made. Can you be able to clarify that for you?
I mean, I didn't know if y'all used that in your calculations or not.
Good morning, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Yes, we did look at that. That is part of the Fox commercial lots. And that was recently modified with the PetSmart application going back about 10 years ago. So we went ahead and we pulled the original development plans, looked at the storage capacity, looked at the outlet, which there is an outlet out to Lark Avenue or Fetterfield Landing, excuse me, that then goes into the DOT system, so.
That exits out of, in Kill Devil Hills on the oceanfront.
That is correct.
And so that managed storage can be manipulated to provide extra storage at some point in time?
Right. We looked at the storage volume that's currently available and compared that to the original design, and there is excess storage to accommodate a portion, if not all, of the proposed development activities.
So some opportunity could exist for some sort of engineered opportunity for stormwater management on the west side of Lark to be pumped over to that storage area, which would give us possibly more room.
Right, yes. There is potential for routing from There, there is potential from, for routing from the west side of Lark to the east side to that pond.
Okay.
And currently there is an existing swell from that existing, uh, BMP to the west of facilities maintenance that is routed through under Lark Avenue to that pond. So we could either improve upon that or, or pump through that.
Good. But you answered the question. Y'all, y'all did have that knowledge about.
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, that was part of the investigation, yes.
Okay. Thanks. Um, the next thing is, I, I on here don't see like identified areas for like outside storage for things like gravel, sand, salt, mulch, garbage cans, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, do we have an identified area for outside things that we may be able to use on site instead of having to go somewhere else to get it, to get those products?
If I understand, excuse me. If I understand your question, are we accounting for town use of bulk items that they would be utilizing in their mission? And, uh, the, the answer is yes. So a combination of, uh, the, the areas adjacent to where equipment storage is, is envisioned for some of those bulk items as well as, uh, additional supplemental bulk items, uh, potentially stored, uh, just to the north of that operation.
I'm talking about outside.
Outside storage, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you, it seemed like you were pointing to inside places to me, but, but, but you've accounted for that, okay.
Yes.
Um, the, the next part is, when you were doing your charrettes, et cetera, did you identify many internal conflicts? And when I say that, I'm talking about maybe turf issues or, um, one or by division, um, because it seems like to me some of the things that could be put together have still been separated. Um, and I didn't know why that would be.
From, from our perspective, I, I don't believe that, uh, any of that, any turf issues were really accounted for from a, hey, these folks need to be separated aspect. We really tried to look at like users and what made sense for them to share from break areas and locker areas and those type of things, but then creating their own discreet spaces so that, that the turf doesn't become an issue for their actual operations aspects. Uh, so, uh, the, it hasn't necessarily been that we've intentionally separated. We really tried to look at what was public facing within Public Works that the public needed to interact with on a regular basis versus what was operational and internal to the Public Works operation that the staff primarily was interacting with. And that was the, the primary separations that we were trying to, to avoid having the public drive through a town operation area such as Fleet, for example.
Okay. Um, and still internal conflict, um, the, you've identified, I assume, uh, it's one of the places in Public Works that's very interesting to me is, is obviously personal safety. And you feel like the design you're making is as safe for personnel as possible.
That's our, that's certainly our goal, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, um, one of the things, at least from my perspective, as far as internal conflict that I see, is I, I personally like to have the administrative part where individuals would be coming for maybe a meeting or whatever to be separated from recycling. I just, I have more, this, this is just personal, it may not be the board, it may not be Public Works, but just for me, I like recycling kind of off to itself because there's so much traffic going through and the way it is managed, which isn't inappropriate, but I'd hate for somebody to be wandering around in administrative service looking for the Pub Works Director and end up in a recycling site. So, and this appears to be circling that building, but that's just a personal observation.
Excellent point. Uh, the, the intent is that the public parking and the public access for the administrative building would be isolated from a, a fence line or other internal security, whether it's a, a concrete berm or, or otherwise, uh, earthen berm or something that would, uh, again, for that visitor coming to Public Works Admin, they would have a very clear delineated, this is my entrance, um, and coming to that facility, whereas most of the public circulation for recycle is envisioned to the south side of this parcel, such that they come in, can do their drop-off and then leave the site. And then the northern side of the parcel is really the operational side of managing the, the carryout of the collected goods and the resupply of containers to, uh, collect the next batch of goods.
As far as Public Works is comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, so, so kind of that internal mingling, the, the question that you had had, so we've been down about seven folks over the course of the, the majority of the summer, so one of the things that we're kind of priding ourselves on is just this cult, the, the culture within Public Works that we're all working together for this, for this same purpose. So we've had a lot of folks from facility maintenance come over and help sanitation, vice versa. Uh, water, water distribution folks have stepped in, helped clean up trash, uh, on the, on the beach access. So as far as like intermingling folks, um, we, we really don't see that as an issue. Uh, you, this will make a lot more sense once you kind of see the, the floor plan and what that looks like. Uh, basically what the folks have, have provided for us is a, a window and a door, uh, for the recycle person to, to be on the very south side of that administration building. So that's where they have the most interaction. It's really, it's really separated from like the lobby and, and the offices for, uh, for Public Works Administration as well as any kind of, uh, conference room or anything like that. So really not that internal interaction for, with the recycle and the admin folks.
Thank you. And you gave me that answer. I wanted, it wasn't supposed to be a negative question, it was supposed to be to get that answer where everybody's working together.
Yes, sir.
And then one, one final thing, and this speaks to probably, um, well, I'll just throw it out there, which is the reason we have our rules for Fresh Pond is because there might be an opportunity to produce water again. And my only question is, are we allowing in the development of this, the opportunity where the town in Agshead may be producing water again?
Based on my understanding, and I, I'd lean on the water plant, we haven't done anything to potentially jeopardize that and we've certainly been trying to work around that opportunity, um, but not sure what additional infrastructure may be required to start that operation again and if that's been adequately factored space-wise and otherwise.
Yeah. I, I know it, well, well, obviously we used to produce water and that was one of the reasons for the protection of the pond. But then I do understand a few years ago, we started removing some production equipment. I'm not sure why, but there's always an opportunity when the town might be in a position to have to produce water again.
Oh, yeah. We, uh, the equipment that's there now, and that's the reason, part of the reason for the shutdown was, need to be updated because the rules and regulations have, had gotten tighter than when it was first built in eighty-three, I think. But, um, the equipment and the filters, everything's still there. We, we had to take out a piece of pipe that connected us to the county so that it was, you know, state clean break. I think if we are given the opportunity to be able to produce water, we would have to do something like an RO unit and they make packages, so I don't think we would use the equipment that we have there. Maybe the pumps, maybe, um, the SED basin for storage, but, uh, the, some of that would probably have to be taken out and new stuff put in.
Yeah. I just, I hope we're not, it's a double negative. I hope we're not, not looking at that.
Correct.
Thanks, Nancy.
Yes, sir.
I'm through. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any, um, sort of closing remarks, observations? Um, tell us maybe something about how, where the schedule goes from here.
Certainly, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. Commissioner Sears, I heard your request of an overlay and we're happy to generate that. We, we have the ability to produce that and we're happy to generate that and can get that back to Andy so that we can get you a copy of that as well. Um, and we do have, uh, some paper copies of this as well that, uh, you guys can take with you as you begin to, to review that.
Thank you. Just generally speaking, the next step would be obviously to get the feedback from the board. And so I'll be reaching out to the board members to try to set up maybe a time, um, to collect feedback or we need to have another meeting, um, at one of our mid-month or regular meetings to talk about where you see the direction going. Um, just from a perspective of where we were looking at, uh, for the overall effort, um, realistically, we, we assumed that we were going to be starting any type of phased construction in fall of twenty-twenty-two, that it would essentially take the year to go through the development, um, and design phases and we, we're going to need to go through the CAMAS, uh, CRC variants. We're going to need to do, um, permitting, bidding and construct, or, uh, financing. And so we would expect to hopefully be in the position to do the financing application in the spring. And that would coincide with budget time and you would be looking at what you would do for financing a, as we adopt the budget to, to look at our debt that would, we, we would need to pay for phase one or whatever phase you decide to do. Um, so I think, once we get some direction from the board on the master plan, we would be ready to go, go into the phase one design. Uh, we, the board did approve money for that phase one design, uh, prior to the budget this year, as you remember, so we have that already available to us. Uh, so, um, that's just a general overview of the schedule and we just, we'll need to work out the details of how we're going to interact with the board to get that final set of feedback on where you want to go with phasing and get input on your, you know, the details of each one of these, um, options here. As we go through the design phase, we'll be looking at, you know, more detailed floor plans and, um, the function of the spaces in the buildings. Uh, we've talked a little bit about, um, you know, okay, what, do we want to incorporate renewable energy, low-impact development? Do we want to electrify the site? Um, all those things need to be taken into consideration. The, the effort that Michael mentioned earlier about the E-TIP grant, the National Renewable Energy Lab, there's an opportunity for them to, to advise us on, on the development of this site to incorporate some of, uh, renewable energy technologies into this. So there's a lot of details to be worked out, uh, but that's, that'll, that'll come as we get into the, the phase one design and the board sort of adopts what they want for, for a conceptual master plan.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Um, and thank you folks for, for coming down today. Um, so that will take us back to then, uh, new business item H two, which is consideration of the resolution in support of the Agshead Fishing Tournament. And, uh, I don't know that anybody needs to speak to this necessarily. Um, I'll, I'll read the resolution, um, and then perhaps we can just proceed with a motion. Um, so this is a resolution regarding the issuance of beach driving permits for the Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament to be held October sixth through eighth, whereas the Agshead Surf Fishing Club is sponsoring its annual Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament October sixth through eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas in accordance with section eight dash eighty-three B three of the Agshead Code of Ordinances, the Agshead Surf Fishing Club submitted a request on July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one for the Agshead, for Nat, the town Agshead to issue two-hundred-and-eighty-two, that being three per team plus forty-two for judges and scores. Short-term beach driving permits to the Agshead Surf Fishing Club to be distributed to participants in its annual Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Agshead Board of Commissioners that the Town of Agshead is pleased to offer its assistance for the Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament again this year. Be it further resolved as follows, the Town Clerk is authorized to issue two-hundred-and-eighty-two short-term beach driving permits to the Agshead Surf Fishing Club to be distributed to participants in its annual Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament to be held Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, October sixth, seventh, and eighth, twenty-twenty-one. These special permits will be vowed for a three-day period from Wednesday, October sixth through Friday, October eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Only three permits shall be allowed per team fishing in the tournament. Only three vehicles per team allowed to be on the beach at any time during the tournament. That being new language. The Agshead Surf Fishing Club is responsible for distribution of all short-term beach driving permits for the twenty-twenty-one Agshead Surf Fishing Club Tournament. No individual short-term permits for the tournament will be issued by staff. The name of the team and town to whom a permit is issued shall appear on each permit. Prior to the start of the tournament, the Agshead Surf Fishing Club shall provide the Agshead Town Clerk with a list showing the team name or tournament official and the numbers of permits issued to each. A pamphlet to be provided by the town on regulations governing beach vehicle traffic and the Town of Agshead shall be supplied with each permit distributed by the Agshead Surf Fishing Club. Each permit shall be displayed on the inside front windshield of the passenger side of the vehicle, even if a normal Agshead beach driving permit is already displayed. All three short-term beach driving permits must be in possession of the team at all times, the permits are not transferable. The Town of Agshead Beach Driving Ordinance will be strictly enforced by the Agshead Police Department. Should the weather or high tide call for closure of the beach or a section of the beach, the town manager will close the beach, this being the fourth day of August, twenty-twenty-one. Having heard that, um, a motion might be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Um, the way I read this, and I agree with this, would be three vehicles per team. Now, if somebody, let's say a team from Agshead, two of the people already have beach driving permits?
Mm-hmm.
And then can they come in their own vehicles or is it three vehicles?
Three vehicles per team is the way.
That's the way I read it. And I just wanted to make sure I put that on the floor. So if, if somebody already has a permit, they can't drive a fourth car.
Right. No.
I think it's specified that it, it must display the.
Yes.
Right.
So, yes, I think, and I think that's out.
I think that's, that's the way I read it. I just want to make sure that, that's, that's all our inter.
I think that was the intent all along.
Right.
Some of it just didn't get put in originally.
Yeah, this is.
At the time the discussion came about for the three permits per team.
Right.
You're just, I think it's the seventieth angle or sixteenth, nineteenth, seventieth, nineteen-fifty, one or fifty-two.
That's pretty, I think you're right, seventieth, I think, maybe.
You know, this is a, a event that draws a lot of people here.
Yes.
We certainly, as a board, and, and I know previous boards have always supported this, and just so we know that the, the reason for the three vehicles per team is the safety aspect with the conflicts that we've had.
With number of people, the extension of the season, um, yes, potential conflicts, beach closures.
Yeah.
And just the sheer number of people driving on the beach because that is the first full week of beach driving.
Well, it's certainly a event that I know a lot of people look forward to and I hope, I know that, I personally, I know the rest of us all support the tournament, but we are just looking out for the safety aspect. Yes. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. If there's no other, uh, discussion, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Not, not to get off the subject, but since we've mentioned that, and she mentioned that is the actual first week that we allow, what if we push those additional back lanes?
For regular beach driving or back a week?
I mean, why don't we just look into it? And that way you don't have individuals come here, get a ticket, I get it, and then they're driving with the additional, because you've got forty-two plus probably a hundred teams, that's three hundred, that's three-hundred-and-fifty cars on the beach in Agshead plus whoever individually comes out, is my point.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just a thought, I mean.
Okay. I know staff is already looking at the beach driving issue, so I, I guess we'll just throw that consideration to the hopper.
You know, we, we had intended to bring back, uh, an ordinance to you in September on beach driving. Uh, I think our prior discussion was focused on the language of the ordinance, but not necessarily the season at this point. Uh, we had talked about getting some more input from the public on the driving season. We had talked about getting some more input from the public on the driving season. So our efforts really weren't focused on that. If we want to look at doing that now, then we could certainly do that.
I'm just saying, if we're limiting the cars to three per team plus the 42 judges, if we know we're going to have 350 vehicles on the beach minimum, wouldn't we at that point look at how can we reduce more vehicle or traffic in an already hostile situation with our safety situation, however you want to look at it, by just moving the start of beach driving to the week after? I mean, it's just a thought. I'm just saying, just throw that out there.
I think it's possibly a little late this year because we would have to coordinate with.
With Kewell Hills, I know. That was what came to my mind.
Just a thought.
It's a thought as we move forward for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
That would bring us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Mr. Hobbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, it's a pleasure to be with you here today in John's place and I always look forward to seeing each of you. And we certainly appreciate the ability to serve the town and you in this capacity. I don't have any specific presentations today, but certainly if you have any questions or things like that, I'd be glad to try to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to say, the increase the board approved for Hornthal O'Reilly was, you represented them well for that improvement.
Thank you.
Maybe we bought ourselves a higher class of attorney.
Maybe we did.
Thank you. We certainly do appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Robert, and you have no items for a closed session, I take it, by that?
No, I do not. I'm told that the one on the agenda will need to be postponed as far as the property matter, but otherwise I don't have anything for you today for closed session.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That does bring us down to that item and we will have to postpone that. We don't have the information that we need this morning. The next item on our agenda then would be the Board of Commissioners' agenda and call Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, Mayor. DOT posts signs at all the crosswalks. Nag's Head has added signs in various places, and I would like to see the town become consistent and add the signs to all the crosswalks, which is the part about the state law yielding to pedestrians as state law. We have them on piecemeal throughout the town, and I think we need to be consistent with our signage and add them to all the signs.
I agree.
So I would like to, you know, if the board would endorse that, that we go back and add the signage to all the crosswalks, considering that there is a major crosswalk problem this year. I've had reports from visitors and residents that they're in the crosswalk and vehicles are speeding up saying, "You lose, you lose," by not stopping. And these are local people that are doing that at the crosswalks, trying to just encourage people from using crosswalks and having vehicles stop. So I would like to encourage both more police vigilance at crosswalks as well as just asking the public to please be considerate of anyone in the crosswalk. That's a very vulnerable position to be in, and the last thing we want is a tragedy.
Yep, it is. Any thoughts about that, Andy, before I ask the board to endorse that? Because I think we all would be in favor of that signage.
Well, and then there was another update I was going to provide the board on some of the NC DOT issues that have been brought up.
Of course.
So I was maybe going to just tack that on to the end of Commissioner Cahoon's remarks here. But we did meet with NC DOT the same day we talked about the half marathon. Their traffic engineer was here. We talked about those signs, and Eric can speak to this much better than I can, but he's a traffic engineer. We were dealing with the DOT traffic engineer. Technically, those are their signs and that we've been putting those up. And they've offered to replace any sign we want to replace, just say the word and they'll do it, and make them more uniform because they're different heights and different locations and they really need to be more uniform. We did discuss that one sign, though, and maybe Eric can come up and talk about that. I mean, that is a MUTCD sign and it's really, the recommendation from MUTCD is for that to be an in-road sign placed along the center line. And there's just limited opportunities, you know, throughout the town to place it at the center line because of all the turning movements. And we've placed those signs on the side of the road. DOT has said that, you know, they haven't really cared about that, but maybe you can just chime in on that and then I'll talk about some of those things.
Yeah, Andy, I think you have that covered. It's a, so in the MUTCD, there is a statement that talks about those signs. They're intended to be on the double yellow stripe. I think that's something we could definitely look at. And the reason being, just because they're more visible, you really kind of narrow the lane down maybe a little bit at that point. We are somewhat limited, though, because as Andy indicated, the turning movements. Typically, our crosswalks are right there at intersections, so that becomes a little problematic, especially with driveway spacing in and around those intersections. But we can definitely look at that, see where we can place those in the center of the cross or in the center of the road, and then talk about what does that supplemental look like as well. So, you know, the MUTCD is a guidebook. You know, it does say that they should be in the middle of the road, but, you know, again, as a supplemental sign, when you're trying to bring attention to pedestrian safety, I don't think you can ever do too much. So again, we'll take another look at that, see where we can place them in the middle of the road, and then where we can't, we'll get with the DOT and see what we can do there as far as the supplemental.
Now that you brought it up.
Yes, ma'am.
We did have one in the middle of the road in the double yellow lines down at the Whalebone, Jeanette's Pier Crossing.
Yes.
And that sign seems to have disappeared. We had one there for, as people would, because there's a turn lane there to go south exit, but there was a sign in that crosswalk.
And DOT didn't come pull it?
No. It seems to be hit on the side of the road a lot. Sometimes it's deliberately run down by people.
Yeah, and that will be a little bit of a trial and error. They're made to, they're spring loaded, they're supposed to bounce back up, but, you know, some of that's dependent on the length of lag bolt and some of those things as far as insulation goes.
So may I ask you, so if every time it gets knocked down, it needs to be put back up, is that, do we have to rely on DOT or will DOT give us a handful of those that we could put them up or do we not want to do that for some reason?
We will, I'll need to investigate that. And again, as far as the maintenance of those signs, we're going to be much more reactionary than or timely as far as replacement goes. So just getting some kind of agreement so that we're able to replace those once they are hit. I do have experience with those as well. They do get hit. It just kind of depends on bigger vehicles traveling down the road. So I mean, that's something that we'll have to look at. You know, if we put them in a couple of places and they continue to get knocked down, maybe we do look at side mount at that point, but there are options there. So it's a little bit of a trial and error because, again, we just don't want to be out there on a weekly basis having to replace those things either.
Right. Commissioner Fuller, you had a question?
A few years ago, on 12 in Southern Shores, part of this, where on some of those, where the signs were, we were able to put little islands with curb. So it gave an opportunity, because that's a much heavier travel road, but it gave people opportunity to go halfway across, stand on that island, then go the other half if they couldn't get all the way. And I don't know how many people go up that way, but those islands were put in on 12 on the same-sized road that we have in a heavier traffic area. So just all I'm saying is, you may want to look at a little island where the sign can go.
Yeah, and we'll have to look at lane width. We have that outside, the outside white stripe to delineate the roadway edge. We may have to look at what that looks like to make sure that we've got enough width. Again, you know, the narrower lane that we have, the slower the traffic will travel, which is really what we want. But again, we just don't want it to be, we don't want to get it too narrow where we have issues with our trash trucks or any kind of other delivery trucks. But yeah, definitely look at those things as far as pedestrian refuge and what that could look like.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question?
Yes, certainly.
Since we got the sign topics up here. How are we coming along with the talk with DOT about the no-left turn sign coming out of Old Oregon Inlet?
Well, Eric was there too, so he can. Yeah, yeah. So the left turn out of Old Oregon Inlet and then also the potential traffic study there at Gray Eagle, they said that they would do the study there and that they would also look at that particular intersection. They agreed that there's a lot of traffic conflicts that happen in that general vicinity. So that was something that they were agreeable upon to do traffic studies at both that intersection as well as the Gray Eagle intersection, so.
In the summer or in January?
Yeah, that's, no, that's a good point. And that was a specific thing that we brought up, that it's, time is of the essence because we definitely want those traffic counts done in the peak of the season, which, you know, we only have probably another month that they, yeah, we'll have to gather the counts. They agreed that they were going to get those counts done for the Gray Eagle issue in August. And then the issue over on 12, looking at the no-left turn and any other things that could be done in that area to improve the situation, he said, check back with him in 30 days and they should have information on that. So the other, the last thing about that is Commissioner Cahoon had asked about what happened to the equipment on the causeway.
Yes, thank you.
So we talked about that and he said there's enough equipment to do two push-button pedestrian signals at two crosswalks on the beach road and that they would install them as soon as we tell them which ones we want to do. And so Eric was going to look into that to kind of give a final recommendation. At the first glance, we talked about the Jeanette's Pier Crosswalk and then possibly one at Bonnet Street. So it would be push-button and it would be lighted, and so that is something that we can have done as soon as we tell them what we want.
Both of those make sense because Bonnet Street's our biggest, Bonnet Street and Jeanette's Pier are two biggest beach accesses.
Yep. Yep, good.
So you answered my other question. Thank you. I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's traffic concerned. I've noticed it, but I also had a couple of business owners and property owners in the area of Dune Street talk to me about the parking of, I'll call them Winnebago's for lack of a better term, parked in the street for days at a time. That was one, that they didn't understand how one could stay parked there for hours and days at a time. And the other was, Dune Street is becoming a parking area for people going to the beach. There's no beach access there. So the request is getting ready to come from some of the property owners about posting Dune Street, no parking on the side since it's becoming a parking lot.
We had no parking signs at one time.
Well, Dune Street is that new street that's by the new event center.
Okay.
But it's evidently becoming an overflow as well as parking to go to the beach. And like I say, there's no beach access right there. The nearest access is going to be further south on that.
Is that Dune Street or is it the street south of Dune Street?
No, Dune Street is the.
Dove. Dune is about.
Dune is beside Surfside Plaza.
Yeah.
Then I misread it.
That's fine.
It would be Dove Street.
Okay, sorry.
And we were presented by people when that site plan we approved, we were presented by people on the oceanfront and we assured them at that time we would do whatever necessary to help them, making sure that we didn't encourage people to trespass across their property.
Correct. Sorry, I was in the main.
Because I added that, some of that parking is people staying at those six units, they're not parking at those six units.
They're on the street and on South Street, and I think we need to be good stewards of what we promised to people as well as make sure that the proper signage is, that was required as part of the site plan, still be there about, when you come out from that sidewalk, you're supposed to be directed as to where the beach access is, and I didn't see a sign up. So just want to make sure the site plan is being followed, but I think we need to take a look at posting that street as no parking.
With it being a new street, we talked about the drainage infrastructure that may be there, people parking on the right-of-way is going to slowly deteriorate away, much like the motion that you made to make Gray Eagle Street, you know, when we did the improvements there. So I think there's a much bigger problem there than, so I think we.
So it's both, it's traffic, drainage, and since it is new street and we're trying to get that infrastructure to take hold with the grass and so forth, we don't need to be encouraging everybody to park on the side of the road with that.
And that would be, that owner has enough parking, I think some communication with, well, I would understand perhaps a large vehicle that's in the, staying in the cottage court not wanting to pull into there, but that same owner has parking at the event building itself where they could park a larger vehicle. And then building to the south. So it's some communication there with that owner that, you know, those guests need to be parked up in his commercial lots if they don't want to park in the cottage court.
I myself have observed, I can't believe that, number one, that vehicles allowed to park there all day long, any street, blocking traffic and not get ticketed or towed. So that's an enforcement issue on that particular type of issue.
Right.
I would like the board to consider posting, sorry, Dove Street. That's right.
There's no parking.
Are you making that a motion now or are you going to ask that it be brought back?
I'm going to leave that up to the discretion of the board if the board would like to consider it today or if it'd like to wait till September, which is another month away, which would be, our first meeting is.
Tomorrow first?
The first.
Well, you know, just keep in consideration that same owner has a property to the north that possibly is going to be developed into another commercial site that would actually create more traffic on Dove Street. So if the board's amenable, I'll make the motion.
I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and post it now. We've seen an issue. Go ahead and post it, get it added to our traffic control map and.
While we're doing that.
Yes.
Then I would make a motion that we prohibit Dove Street between US 158 and Highway 12 be posted as no parking on both sides of the street.
Do we make it a towaway zone or just no parking?
Both. Towaway zone and no parking. How's that?
And I would second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you.
And that that actually be forwarded on to the police department. And I'm sure public works will get it posted pretty promptly, but let the police department know that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cahoon. And that brings us to Commissioner Fuller.
Before I get to what's on the agenda, I do want to thank staff for their pre-planning and pre-positioning and the information flow to the board about what's been going on with the pending weather. Andy, thank you for getting timely information to us. Eric, thank you for getting people out there and doing what needs to be done before the event. Thank staff for working with DOT on the outfalls prior to, just good job. As it relates to Harvey Street, I'll try to be brief. What I'm asking the board to do is sign up on a concept, not anything more than a concept, but right now Harvey Street or Harvey Beach Access is currently used, as we know, as a sailboat launching site. It is also a kiteboard launching site and a windsurfing launching site. Most of the kiteboarders use the southwest corner of the event site to lay out their gear, but they walk through the Harvey site to launch. I believe, I think I'm pretty correct, I did not check on this, but when we developed Harvey Street, that was one of the identified sites that we had that was supposed to be a non-motorized launch sites for different crap, whatever that may be. It appears. It appears that that's a great opportunity for wind slash water sports activities. And right now, the Dare County Tourist Bureau is in a design phase for their boardwalk. The town has allocated about, I think, $20,000 from our budget to work with the Dare County Tourist Bureau on the design where Harvey Street links with the tourist bureau site. So we've already got an activity going there and, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? You know, I think in this particular situation, at least putting this on the table and having it for discussion is better than waiting until certain things happen. You know, we're going to have an estuary shoreline committee. There's some potential out there that there's some dredgeful sand that could be used somewhere. I'm not saying that we could get the permits to build a beach out there, but you don't want to eliminate the opportunity of that material going somewhere else before we have the opportunity to get it. I would hate to see us go through a design concept at the tourist bureau and then the town come back later and say, oh, well, let's see if we can do something else. So what I'd like to do is just propose that the town endorse the concept of looking at the Harvey site and the southwest corner of the Dare County Tourist Bureau site as a formalized wind-water activity site that would give us access for a certain population that fits a lot of local people as well as a lot of out-of-town people. And just that when staff is working together with the tourist bureau, that that become one of the concepts that is recognized as something that could possibly be developed in that area, so.
I mean, as you described that, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, that could become a really idealized windsurfing kiteboarding access site. I mean, with just a little bit of design and thought to that, with that combination of some activity on their property. And I mean, if you kind of did, I can see where if you kind of did a plan where maybe you talked to a few of the users and said, okay, here's the, here's the description of this activity and here's what would really make this thing as an access site. I think that could be, and that would be a great direction to expend some of our, you know, design resource and energy.
See no reason why we shouldn't put it out there during the phases of that area, you know, the boardwalk and the stuff that's already in the process. At least throw out there what we want to do.
We're limited on our site to 100 feet. They have over 300 feet to the north of our site, all within the southern portion of the turnaround. So they have more options to lay out kites and drive, you know, to get to the water. If they build a boardwalk all the way down to our site, they've eliminated that and they've handcuffed us on what we could do. Because with the Hobie Cats, with anybody paddle boarding, you know, a 99 to 102 foot linear frontage isn't that much compared to their 300 and some that's there. And some of that site's already sandy.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's a conceptual idea to throw forward. I mean, as long as we stress that what we're looking for is a non-commercialized activity.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm just, you never know what comes forward, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And if the, if the board would be the kind, I'd like to take that to the tourist bureau that the town supports that concept and directs staff to work with the developer, the design team to at least incorporate that as a concept.
So can we do that by acclamation? It sounds like we're all on board with that, so, so yes, please do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just had to take 30 seconds if I could. We all know last Sunday we had an extreme weather event that came through and Commissioner Cahoon and others, we rode the beach road, we saw the amount of trash that was out. And I know the public works director is working hard with the real estate companies, but I talked to the interim manager the other day and not only those two, but a number of employees came out on a Sunday afternoon to help police the pickup trash along the beach road. And a few short hours later, what was a disaster area was very soon cleaned up.
Michelle has a picture, if you want to put that up to show what public works staff and so forth. That was one of the areas north of me. No trash bags, except for a few, but they threw their garbage just on the street. I wonder if these people live like that at home? I mean, that's disgusting.
It is. To your point, are you suggesting that there should be some note of appreciation to these folks?
I think, that's the point, one of the two items I had was to ask if the board would be so inclined to send something of appreciation to those employees that came out and made an area that was a disaster area back to where it should be in a few short hours, if we could be so inclined to do that.
I would second that.
I would agree. And also point out that the management company did have somebody come out and help in this situation, which was good as well. But yes, I think thanking employees would be great.
Mayor, thank you for that. And then the last thing that I have, we heard earlier today from Commissioner Fuller, and you also commented about the approval or the endorsement of the concept of developing the Soundside Event Site property. We now know that being those two steps are there, the next step is that for it to come to the town where they will begin possibly working with town staff of ideas about developing that. It was highly publicized in online news sites, a lot of comments. And the only thing that I would ask is that there, as Commissioner Fuller said, there will be an opportunity for public engagement and that I would ask people that to come out and voice their opinion in regards to the site. If the tourist bureau is going to have public engagement and opportunities, just I hope that people do come out and have their voices heard. That's what they're having it for, so I would just encourage that. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I would say, when I talk about public engagement, I'm not talking about the tourist bureau sitting in their office or in their conference room and having a public meeting. I'm talking about going out in various parts of the county, which includes the northern part of the county, the mainland or Roanoke Island, Hatteras and somewhere on the beach here, and make presentations and talk to people and get feedback. That's where I'm coming from as a tourist bureau member, not an egghead board member, but as a tourist bureau member, I think we need considerable public input.
I think there's, you know, from the two sides and the nature of that input, you know, I hope that we hear from, because of what's involved in that project and if it precedes the kind of potential that it has to have an impact on the community, I'll be looking, I will be listening for real justification of the need from the community and from certain user groups who may benefit from that kind of facility, I expect, and I really hope to hear that. And then on the other side, putting the other hat on, when it comes to the town, having the town folks come and really be vocal about what they expect this board to do and what their aspirations are for the way that that ends up.
You said it so much better than I did, but that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, but that's right. And I, this is such a sensitive subject and, you know, I'm not sure what the format will be, but I would hope that we would advertise that so that people know that it's an important issue. It's important to the board and we, I think what you're saying is that we want, the board really wants to hear from people about what they expect. Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda and one of the things we need to do, if the board is so inclined, is to schedule a fall retreat. We had, a lot of things have happened. We had our last retreat. We put a lot on the table in terms of that strategic plan. Staff's been working on that, I think. You know, it's hard to sort of keep a grasp on all of the moving parts of that. We have new staff and it would seem to be important that we would revisit that as we're going into the fall and, you know, at some point along the way here, we'll have a permanent manager at some point. And so it would be beneficial to us to, I think, sort of reset our sails. I would suggest, if I may, the last, the end of September, the 23rd and 24th of September, if your calendar is clear.
I want the end of October.
Well, we could do that. If you didn't hear, Commissioner Cahoon suggested, what about the end of October instead?
Three of you have a lot of work to do in the fall.
Well, yeah. And my thought process was on that, two of has more work than the third person and that maybe you'd want to include whoever that other person may be in here in that meeting to get them up to speed. That's a pretty good point. But any date's going to work for me that you've mentioned.
Are you talking about a one day or more than a day?
We had this, what we had the last time, and I'm not suggesting this, but just to review, we had three days before. It was two days, it was two days, which we brought staff in and then staff had a day. My suggestion at this point probably would be a day for us and then a day for...
But the three day one was what, in the spring there, right?
Yes.
The three day one's in the spring. The fall one's not usually but one day, I thought.
Right, yeah. So...
That would be a good day to recap and just put things in place as a review.
I could possibly commit to one. I can't commit to two in September.
Okay, so...
Not at this time, as crazy as this season is.
Right. Andy, are you going to speak to that or?
The, one question would be, you know, Greg had brought in Richard Furzman to do the retreat we had, I think it was last fall, and we didn't do one in the spring because we did it so late in the fall last year. And so, you know, if we wanted to try and pick back, pick that back up, you know, we're not starting from scratch this time, you know, we could ask him to come and help us, see what he would suggest as sort of an abbreviated retreat, maybe a day and a half. But I could reach out to him and then see if he's interested, if the board wants us to go in that direction and then see what he would suggest and see when he's available as well.
Well, and I would, in sensitivity to the time demands, you know, if we could, you know, and if everybody would commit to a long day, you know, let's see if we can, ask him if we think we can do it in a day. And I would personally be inclined to stay to that end of September.
Question for you. Are we going to have a true retreat in January like we normally do?
I would suggest we do, yeah.
So we're going to have two back-to-back like that?
Well, so we would have one in September and one in January.
No, we're going to have two long ones back-to-back? That's just a question.
Well, I mean, I mean, my, I understand that and that's usually, you know, then that's onboarding, you know, if there's a, if there's a new commissioner that's onboarding them in January. But it's, for me, sort of being, you know, now that we're into the new year, we've identified some issues that really need to be addressed this summer, staff is working on them, I just, I think, I have a sense there is some benefit to a fall, a day.
Yeah, I mean, I'll commit to a day. I just can't commit to three days or two days away.
No, 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 I wouldn't ask that.
Well, just one point, after hearing what some of you have said over the last year, especially last spring, you know, I think there's a desire to modify the budget process. And I think there's a feeling that the budget starts too late. You know, the CIP starts too late, then the budget's too late, and there's just not enough time to do it. And so I think backing that up would be beneficial. Having a fall retreat, I think, helps staff figure out, okay, what are we going to be thinking as we go into the budget? You know, and they really should be working on their CIP items in November, December. And so having the fall retreat helps them frame some of those requests. And then the spring retreat could be sort of a pre-budget type retreat.
All right. So let's ask the facilitator for one of those, one of those late September, one of those days at the end of the last week in September, if everybody's calendar's clear.
I'm, I'm, September 26th to October 3rd.
Well, that takes...
Other than that, the end of September works.
Was September 22nd, 23rd or one of those days? I'm saying two dates, not just, not to have two days, I'm saying just for calendar flexibility.
Some of the middle of that week would be all right. Either the 22nd or 23rd, maybe?
About Thursday, September 23rd. Okay, let's, everybody kind of hold that one, please. And Andy, let's see if we can get something arranged for that, that date. And I appreciate your point, Andy, about starting, you know, sort of identifying issues if they come up in the retreat, identifying issues that staff should be thinking about for budget and maybe improving the way that process goes. That's all I have. Is there any other business to come before the board today? All right. Now, we should recess to Friday afternoon at 2:00?
2:00.
We don't have anything tomorrow. You sure?
We did.
Oh, we did.
The assessment starts tomorrow, but you're not...
They do the assessments tomorrow, but we don't have any participation in that.
Not till Friday.
So we are only Friday afternoon?
Correct. Is that good? Good or...
Oh, it's fine. I mean, I had tomorrow and Friday marked out.
No, only Friday, only Friday afternoon.
Extra day.
Hey, I'm happy.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we recess to Friday afternoon at 2:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. Is that a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. We're in recess.